Good morning.
Yes.
I chaired this with Roger. I don't know if he shared it.
Good morning.
Took over the chair.
How are you?
Took over the chair. You'll probably recall we renovated this building in 2007.
Mm-hmm.
So, starting early this was...
Hey Sarah.
And it will take us to somewhere today.
Hey Jeff.
We're gonna be replacing all the carpet and painting it. There's no other renovation.
Morning, how are you doing?
Last year, but that didn't really interrupt operations.
Right.
This is, we'll have to move people around, some of them will have to work from home. Now, we've got this area scheduled to be done during Christmas break.
Okay.
So, should interfere with the board meeting.
Okay. Good morning. All right. Good morning. I would like to welcome everyone to the December Committee of the Whole on this wet rainy day outside. And the first item on our agenda is the minutes for the Committee of the Whole on the consent calendar.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the...
Minutes as presented.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion or corrections? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. All right. Those stand approved. Next item on our agenda is the appearance of visitors. And we have, I think, one visitor this morning. It is Ms., uh, let's see, I'm gonna have her, I'm gonna have Dr. Stiles read our...
Thank you. As each speaker's name is called, he or she should proceed to the podium at the end of the board's desk, where there's a microphone and a light system. Each speaker has up to three minutes to speak to the board. The light system will be green for the first two minutes and will turn yellow when one minute remains on the speaker's allotted time. In keeping with board policy, KCA, abusive language or personal attacks aimed at students or staff members will not be permitted. Also, speakers are expected to behave in an orderly and respectful manner. The board will not engage in discussion with the speaker or respond to comments. The superintendent will designate a member of the staff to respond to each speaker in an appropriate and timely manner.
All right. Our speaker today is Caroline Van Hook.
Good morning. My name is Caroline Van Hook. I have a child who attends Jailman High School, so I'm here today just to express my support and maybe some concern about the Jailman renovation. So, the plan is obviously to build a elementary school there, and then also as part of that, there will be a renovation of the athletic complex. And as any of you know, if you've been to the Jailman site, it needs a lot of love. There's not a lot that has been done to the complex in quite some time. I have been very involved with the Facilities Committee of the Booster Club of Jailman. We've spent countless hours trying to collaborate with the school district. It's been a great process. And my understanding is where we are now is a bit of a crossroads, trying to come up with additional funding for everything that DOT is requiring of the school district for the project. I have frequent calls with the city, with Shannon Laverne, just to try to get updated from the city, but what I am asking for today is just, you know, as these meetings occur, if we can get updates, my understanding is there was a meeting on November 16th. But just want everybody to know that the parents of Jailman are still very much so in support of this project. And if there came a point in time where the school district felt like that this was not gonna be a doable project, I think that the Booster Club needs to be part of that process so that we can figure out what the plan would be for athletics. So, that's really my ask. If at any point y'all decide not to move forward with it, if we would be part of that so that we can do any fundraising or whatever we need to do to do our part. So, thank you all for your time, and thank you for all you do. This is super exciting. I see a lot of new faces, look forward to getting to know you people, and just thanks for all the volunteer time that y'all spend, because I know it's a huge commitment. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Van Hook. All right. The next item on our agenda is the instruction portion, which is the elementary literacy instruction. Dr. Royster.
Thank you, Ms. Bush. You have in your packet today some information regarding this topic. Mr. McCoy and primarily Dr. Stevens are gonna share with you specifics about how we deliver reading instruction. As you all certainly know and understand, literacy and numeracy are the essential building blocks for academic attainment for our students throughout their school career. And reading is particularly important, literacy is particularly important. It's foundational really to every subject that we teach. And it is a complicated and complex system in order to be able to effectively teach reading to all students. And there's been debate about it, I guess, as long as there have been schools. And there have been recent debates about it. And the effectiveness of various programs and whether or not those programs are research-based, and in some total, what I can share with you is that our, our reading instruction is research-based. But Dr. Stevens today, along with Mr. McCoy, are gonna go fairly in-depth into that, because I believe it's a, and we believe as an administration, it's essentially important that all of us have a good understanding of what we do, how we do it, and the fact that we're doing it in a way so as not to miss any particular student and their ability to learn to read. There are, in fact, reading programs out there that research would show you are not effective with some percentage of students. In fact, the estimate on, if you go to a whole language reading program, I believe the research shows about 20% of students cannot learn to read using that methodology solely. So, we need to be able to make sure that we all have a good understanding of what it does take to learn to read and how we're addressing that in Greenville County Schools, because I'm sure you all get asked questions about that frequently. So, hopefully by the end of the day today, a lot of those questions will be answered for you. So, at this time, I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. McCoy.
Thank you, Dr. Royster. Um, Dr. Stevens is gonna do the bulk of the presentation as our Director of Early Learning and Elementary Student Support. We are gonna focus on elementary literacy today, so that's grades K-4 up to grades 5th. Once we change over to 5th grade, we really move into disciplinary literacy, because we're not teaching as much students how to read, necessarily the phonics and phonemic awareness of it, as much as we are the content and vocabulary by subject area. So, what content you need to know for social studies or science or math. Certainly exceptions to that based on students who may be new to the country, students who may have not had a formal education from another country. So, certainly we do some of the basics of reading in middle and high school depending upon a student's background, but we're gonna focus today on just the elementary literacy framework, the framework that Greenville County Schools uses to teach literacy to our students. So, Dr. Stevens?
Thank you, Mr. McCoy and Dr. Royster, and thank you for this opportunity to discuss our English Language Arts Instruction at the elementary level. As Dr. Royster began our conversation this morning, this is an area that is critically important for the academic achievement of our children. We know that that is reiterated in research, and we see it in our everyday practice. This is an area that our team continuously evaluates and monitors to make sure that we are implementing best practice and also research-based methods to meet the needs of all of our learners. In Greenville County Schools, we offer a MTSS Continuum of Supports for all of our students in tiers 1 through 3. And specifically, we do this to make sure, as Dr. Royster indicated, that we don't miss children. We have a portion of our presentation beginning that will focus on Tier 1 instruction, which is the instruction that is provided for all students. And this is sometimes referred to as universal instruction or core instruction. Tiers 2 and 3 are provided for students who need some more targeted or more strategic support or intensive support. And tiers 2 and 3 instruction take place in addition to Tier 1 instruction. So, Tier 1 instruction is for all students. Tiers 2 and 3 are more targeted and more strategic for certain student needs. To better understand our current practices and our current research, I think it's effective and it's timely for us to spend a few minutes looking at the evolution of reading instruction in the United States. As Dr. Royster indicated, there has been a significant shift in the philosophies of reading instruction over the last 50 years or so. These are philosophies that are very deeply held by educators and by researchers, but they certainly are very distinct and very different. So, in the 1960s, we began with whole word instruction. I was, this is where I learned to read, in 1977. This was really when we look back onto whole word instruction of the C-Spot Run Books, where children were learning mostly by word memorization, sight word memorization in isolation. And so, there was a lot of image repetition and word repetition that children would learn to read patterns, and that is how they would learn to read with that whole word approach. That transitioned to the whole language approach in the 1980s. And the philosophy and the belief there was that children would learn to read in an immersive setting, that children would learn to read based on their own pattern of language, and so that children would be creatively challenged and provided with opportunities to read in a more natural environment. Critics of the whole language approach, as Dr. Royster indicated, there was, there was a lot of concern that there was not explicit phonics instruction during that whole language component. And so, as a result of that, there were children that did not learn to read proficiently during that model, proficiently during that model. We transitioned in the 1990s to the Balanced Approach, or the Balanced Reading Framework. And this framework did incorporate many different separate components, including vocabulary, fluency comprehension, reading and writing. It did include a phonics component to that framework. Critics, again, would say that perhaps the phonics instruction during that framework was not as explicit or as intentional as it should have been. And so, now we have transitioned since the 2000s, early 2000s, into what is termed the Science of Reading. And the Science of Reading is not a boxed curriculum. It is a, it is a body of research. It is the culmination of work, and it's continuously ongoing, but it is the work of neuroscientists and reading experts that, that is analyzing the physiological and the neurological connections that a student makes when they're learning to read. So, it is truly the science of reading. And so, that has really had a dramatic impact on the research and the practices. But I think it's really important to look back, and again, this is a very widely differing approach through each of these, but we know that there are positives and negatives to each one of them. And so, it is, as Dr. Royster indicated, a challenging and complex approach when we try to tell a district, especially a district of our size, that we are puristically one thing or another, because in reality, there are positives and research-based practices in each one of these that we blend together to meet the needs of all of our children. Based on the Science of Reading research, we know that the ultimate goal of reading is comprehension. So, in order to comprehend, our children must be able to decode a word. That means they need to know letter sounds, and they need to know word recognition. They also need language comprehension. In 2001, Dr. Hollis Scarborough developed this graphic, which is really the framework of the Science of Reading work. This graphic shows the different components of language recognition and word recognition, I'm sorry, language comprehension and word recognition that a child needs to understand and have automaticity and strategic application. So, you can see each of those two individual strands, the blue and the red, but each of those is also made up by those independent fibers. And so, again, the complexity of teaching a child to read is really illustrated in this graphic, because these individual skill sets cannot be taught in isolation, and they cannot also be taught in a sequential manner. They really need to be taught concurrently. So, based on that current research and based on additional research since 2001, the educational community, including Greenville County Schools, believes that each of these specific components must be explicitly taught by our teachers daily and modeled by our teachers and provided to our students in the educational setting. So, specifically, on a daily basis, our students are working on phonological awareness, they're working on phonics, fluency, vocabulary and comprehension. And again, those are those differing strands from Scarborough's rope. As Mr. McCoy indicated, there are many different building blocks for literacy progression. And you can see at the bottom, the oral language is a foundational skill. In Greenville County, we, we begin to work on that K-3 and K-4 kindergarten, where we're really encouraging children to speak, children to, for the oral communication, receptive language, and their ability to, to be able to articulate clearly. We begin word recognition, some sight word recognition, some letter recognition at that, that primary age. Very typically, as a child ages and progresses from elementary level into middle and high school, we're no longer working on oral language and phonemic awareness unless we have an ML student who is transitioning to us. So, very frequently, as a child progresses out of elementary school, unless they have specific learning needs, we move beyond that oral language and that phonemic awareness piece to that fluency, vocabulary and ultimately comprehension. Bless you. So, as a child ages, we continue to move through this progression. But it's important to know that a teacher has to have the ability and the skill set to be able to work backwards. So, if a child is transitioning to us at a later grade and is missing some of those foundational pieces, as a district, we need to have resources and supports for that teacher in place to be able to work backwards to meet the needs of that child, to be able to move them forward ultimately. As a child ages, not only does our focus on the specific skills increase, but it's important to remember that the text that a child is working with also progressively increases. So, when we look at those specific components of literacy instruction that we know need to take place, we've created a graphic that aligns how each of those naturally falls into our literacy framework. And so, I, I will go ahead and say that, that when we look at fluency and comprehension, even as of this morning, our team was, was discussing this, and my team, our specialists, have informed me that at the 3rd, 4th and 5th grade level, that fluency and comprehension would be reiterated in the language word study. So, that, that was my omission, that I actually should have included language and word study for fluency and comprehension as well. But you can see that each one of those components naturally falls within our specific literacy framework that we have, and that is our Greenville County Literacy Framework. If we zoom in a little bit onto what that looks like on a daily basis for students, I would like to show you a graphic that highlights our instructional model. This is our Greenville County Literacy Framework for Tier 1. So, again, this is all students. This is the instruction that each child receives on a daily basis. And the red D and the blue LC, that's our decoding and our language comprehension, that goes back to the research model Scarborough's rope. And so, you can see that we are continuing to work on decoding and language comprehension in each one of those components. When you look at the reading workshop, the writing workshop, and the language and word study block, underneath you see the specific activities and the specific models that take place within those workshops to be able to meet the little fibers within Scarborough's rope. So, again, we've got the two, the two red and green rope, or two red and blue ropes, and then within each of those components, we're addressing the individual skill sets. So, that over the course of that 90-minute to two-hour block on a daily basis, each one of those components and skill sets is interwoven into the instruction. And this instruction can take place using a variety of resources, a variety of different texts, a variety of different models. We encourage teachers and principals to work together as instructional leadership teams to look at the student needs within that school setting, to develop their block to make sure that they're not only receiving the minimum, minimum number of minutes, but that we're also, within those minutes, appropriately meeting the needs of each child. If we zoom in just a little bit closer to that, we can look at some, very few of the foundational skills that we require or we encourage our children to have as early as K-3, K-4, K-5. So, these are the foundational skills that we anticipate seeing for our children, and these are the ones that we, again, this is just a very small sampling, that we really focus on at the primary level. As a child ages and, and text complexity, complexity increases, we continue to challenge children with more rigorous tasks and more rigorous skill sets. So, you can see that, again, we're working on that language comprehension piece with more texts that are rigorous and more texts that are complex and grade level appropriate. I've provided a hard copy, I believe you have a hard copy, of some test assessment questions. In South Carolina, our standards are, become progressively complex over the course of elementary school. So, this standard that you have in front of you is an informational reading standard. And so, our children, you can see in 1st grade, are asked to retell a central idea and key details to summarize a text. So, our children are learning to evaluate a text, to identify what the key details are, to be able to retell that. They need to be able to identify a central idea, and then they're working on learning what a summarization is. That same standard, informational text 6.1, recurs throughout elementary school. And so, as the child ages, the text becomes more complex, the standard and the rigor of the standard rigor becomes more complex and more challenging. So, that when a child is now in 5th grade in that same standard, we're asking them to summarize comparative information. We're asking them to cite two or more central ideas. We're asking them not only to identify what the key details are, but now to cite that information. So, you can see that if we miss some foundational skills, it becomes much more difficult for a child to master those skills in subsequent years if they miss those foundational pieces in primary level. So, I've given you those samples just so you can see the same standard and explicitly outlined, so you can, you can very clearly see what we are asking our children and our teachers to be able to successfully master throughout elementary school. If we take a very quick snapshot of what this looks like in action, this is a kindergarten classroom, and this is one component of the reading workshop. Our children are engaged with independent reading. They're independently reading the text that is appropriate for them as determined with the teacher, with their anecdotal data and their observation of student progress. And then children can self-select texts, or the teacher can work with them to provide texts so that they can practice the individual skill sets that they need for the foundational level. As a child transitions into upper grades, of course, the text begins to be more complex, but also the tasks that we are asking them to do with that text become more rigorous. So, in this case, this child, the 5th grade child, is participating in writing workshop, which is, again, a daily occurrence. And children are asked to write for a variety of reasons. And so, that writing piece, especially at the, at the elementary level, is really a culmination of all of those different foundational skills, the receptive learning, not only the reading proficiency, but then being able to articulate that, and then to be able to appropriately present that in written form. So, writing is a central component to our approach to literacy instruction. So, as we mentioned, there is Tier 1 instruction that all students receive, but we do have some students that need some more targeted support and some more strategic intervention. And so, in Greenville County, we, again, with our MTSS approach, our multi-tiered System of Supports approach, offer Tier 2 and Tier 3 services for students. Tier 2 services, that is reading intervention. That may be remediation offerings for children, that is children who receive some reading intervention with a reading interventionist, and that could be in a pull-out setting, or some schools offer an inclusion setting where the reading interventionist pushes in, but it is a smaller group setting, and again, that is in addition to Tier 1 instruction. Tier 3 instruction, those are our students who need more intensive support. That tends to be our students who have an IEP, or Special Education for Reading, Reading Needs. There is a variety of different needs that children can have in reading. Specifically though, they tend to fall into one of these three categories. A child struggles with decoding, or a child struggles with language comprehension. Again, thinking back to that rope, we could have a child that's struggling with one component of Scarborough's rope and is impacting the rope overall. Or we could have a child that is struggling with both strands of that rope. And so, we have different approaches to support that child regardless of what their need is. As mentioned, we have the MTSS, the Multi-Tierred System of Support in Greenville County, and so this is very strategic and very targeted. This graphic is from the South Carolina Department of Education, and I think it's a critical graphic because it shows not only the support, but it shows the variety of stakeholders that are involved in that level of support for each child. And it includes not only the instruction and the data analysis, but it includes the school instructional partnerships, and it includes all of the different school leadership entities that are responsible for ensuring that that child is receiving the appropriate intervention to meet the specific need that they have. Intervention is only successful if it is targeted and strategic. It's not beneficial to have a child in intervention if the, if the intervention is incorrectly applied, or we're not targeting the specific need of that child. So, there is a host of, of different supports in place for that child, and these are the stakeholders that hold that support process. Specifically, again, we mentioned that all students receive Tier 1 instruction, but I wanted to provide you with some of the specific research and some of the, the, again, clarity around what Tier 2 and Tier 3 are for Greenville County students. When we look specifically at each of those tiers, we offer some of the different options that schools and teachers and interventionists have, again, to strategically apply intervention for specific student needs. In order to make sure that we are appropriately addressing the needs of students, we have a variety of different resources that, again, are all research-based, best practice resources. They are, we know from research that they have a positive impact and effect size on children, and so these are the different strategies and different supports that we have in place for children depending on their specific deficit. In the state of South Carolina, we have a, a dyslexia handbook that was provided and was put into legislation, Act 213. It was signed into law by Governor McMaster. In 2020, the, assembled a committee to evaluate dyslexia identification and support for children. And so, now we have a very clear and very designated process that we follow to evaluate children and prescreen children for dyslexia. All Greenville County students participate in fast bridge screening in kindergarten and 1st grade. And so, we do that so that we can identify and offer early intervention to any student who may show an indication in a reading or letter identification deficit. It is important to know that that is just one data point. That fast bridge data point is really kind of our indicator to begin to dig deeper and to triangulate data, to make sure that we are, again, offering intervention to students who need it, and to make sure that we are offering the correct intervention to students who may need it. And again, that supports the, the South Carolina dyslexia legislation that was put into place. Specifically, when we look at our fast bridge... Specifically, when we look at our fast bridge screening, this is a snapshot of where we currently are. These are our current first-grade students at the top, and they were given the fast bridge screener in the fall. And they, in first grade, are assessed for reading. And you can see the green, we have 48% of our students who have little to no risk, 27% of our first-grade students who have some risk, and 25% who have high risk. So again, following our process, our schools, our school teams, led by the principal and the MTSS coordinator, would meet to look at their specific children in their building who fall into that high-risk and some-risk category. They would look at beginning to triangulate the other data points that they have to develop a profile, a learning profile for that student, to target the specific needs that they have, to look at the schedule for that student, and then to identify specific and strategic targeted supports for that child. So it's a very intentional, very methodical process that, when followed, ensures that we are aligning the specific strategies and supports to those specific student needs. In kindergarten, we have the same graphic that shows our children when they were assessed for letter names. And so 60% of our children in kindergarten have no risk, some risk 22%, and high risk at 18. I do have a comparative graph that shows a cohort data, meaning last year they were in kindergarten, and this year they are currently sitting in first grade. This is not exactly apples-to-apples, because remember, we are assessing for something different. We are moving from letter identification to reading skill set. So it's a more rigorous task that we are assessing students on. But you can see there that there is some trend data. We actually have a higher risk, slightly higher risk of students in the high-risk category in kindergarten, or, I'm sorry, in first grade. But again, we are asking them to do a more rigorous task in this case. We also had a slightly higher number of first graders that we assessed this year. So in conclusion, we really are very proud of the work that our teachers are doing in terms of meeting the individual needs of students. And I hope that we've evidenced to you the complexity of taking all of this body of research and the proven skill sets that we know children need, and the proven instructional strategies that we know our teachers need, and that we have provided a platform and a framework that our teachers have the ability and the capacity to be able to meet the individual needs of each of the children in Greenville County.
Thank you. Do we have any questions? Yes, Ms. Morrison Fair?
Thank you so much for this report. I love it. I have a couple of questions, and they might, may or may not be related. And the first is, what can parents do to support this program? Because especially... I'm sorry. What can our parents do to support our program in Greenville County? I remember, it has been years ago, I went to a presentation that I think it was at, I forgot what school it, that they had it, but they were, it was almost like a workshop. And they were teaching parents how to support the students, especially with those skills that you had at first, like reading, with the book up. Most parents don't even realize that there's a process to reading. So I don't know if we still do that in Greenville County or not. I'm interested. And my second question is, on that cohort fast bridge screening, in '21, we had high-risk students, 12, 27, 1,227. And then in '22, in the first grade, that number went up. Could it be that every, because I thought kindergarten was mandatory? What would you say would account for that number going up? Is it not everybody getting the right skills in the kindergarten program? Because it seems like there's a disconnect somewhere.
I think the response to that is multifaceted. We do not necessarily have 100% of our current kindergarteners transitioning into our first grade. We do receive some first-grade students coming from other kindergarten programs, some private kindergarten programs, and we do have a certain percentage of our parents who do sign a kindergarten waiver, and they choose to waive their child from public kindergarten. So that's one thing to consider. The other thing is remembering that that fast bridge screener in first grade is requiring students to apply reading skills. It's a different skill set than letter identification. Children can have automaticity with identifying letter names and letter sounds, but then when you ask them to apply that to a word, or to be able to sound out a word, or chunk a word to be able to appropriately decode and read it, that's a much more complex skill set. So while they may be entirely proficient in identifying, in letter names and what that letter sounds like, when they are required to apply it, it's a little bit more challenging for them. So that could also account for some of that discrepancy.
I love what you said, because what it says to me is that we in Greenville County have the best programs available, and students are coming from other areas. But if they come from other areas, then it affects our numbers. But as it stands now, it seems like we have some of the great processes in place and the great systems in place in Greenville County School District.
I am biased, but I would agree.
I figured you would. But about the parent skills, did you?
Yes, ma'am. So, so we work very closely with Greenville First Steps in offering parenting activities. And children who are part of the Greenville County Schools 4K programs, we're currently serving over 1,700 students in that program. We work very closely with those parents to work on pre-kindergarten skills. We rely heavily on our First Step partners to communicate with parents who are not in our system, so that we can reiterate the need of that, the profile of the ready kindergartner, which is that South Carolina outline of the specific skill sets that we want our children to have. Amanda Lacarose, the principal of Greenville County Schools, is offering some things not only for her parents, but for parents who may not be participating in the program, who are in the community. So we have a lot of different things that we do, but that is an area. Early intervention and early access to children is an area that Greenville County, not just Greenville County Schools, but Greenville County, that is a growth area that we could certainly continue to improve to benefit children. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Morrison Fair. We still have a number of schools, and the assistants and attendants might be more readily equipped to speak to that, that do reading or literacy nights, as they also do math and numeracy nights, kind of what you're referencing. We've had schools for a number of years that do that, and I'm sure that we have schools that are, that are doing that right now. One of the biggest takeaways from this, I guess really two takeaways from it. One, as you look at that data, you have to be careful looking at it from one year to the next, because as Dr. Stevens mentioned, you're looking at really this one skill, and that's a foundational skill in kindergarten. You really first begin to look at their ability to read in the first grade. So you have to be careful looking at the two things. But the bigger takeaway is what it says to us is going to kindergarten and first grade, we still have a little more than 50% of our students that are at risk for learning to read, and that we have to move pretty dramatically with those students between the first grade and the third grade to try to move those numbers. Now, you may recall seeing numbers from when we did our test presentation earlier this year, that would indicate that we are moving those students out of the higher and moderate-risk categories with a pretty good degree of effectiveness, but we're still not moving all of them. But this just shows that over time, there's going to continue for us to be a challenge when half our students are still exhibiting some, some risk.
I will add too, Ms. Morrison Fair, that we do have, you may remember, last year, every summer, we do some things, for parents particularly, going into summer school, that just some simple things they can do with their children at home to enforce. They're not reading teachers, obviously, but there's some things they can do simply to reinforce some of the reading skills, particularly we do an at-risk and summer school for the reading, Read to Succeed program. And then also, particularly in our Title I schools, where we have the parent liaisons, a lot of the parent liaisons organize within the school, whether it be a teacher, principal, assistant principal, some workshops for parents to be able to come in and, again, learn some of those strategies, those simple strategies that they could do just to reinforce reading at home with their students to kind of, especially particularly if they're a struggling reader. And so those are two additional things outside the reading nights, literacy nights that Dr. Royster mentioned, maybe more at our at-risk schools that we would do.
Thank you.
Dr. Stevens, thank you for that excellent presentation. I had a question about fast bridge. I've been out of the principalship for a few years now. How is the fast bridge screening currently being done?
Three times a year. Our children are assessed three times a year in fall, winter, and spring. And so that assessment is actually done differently depending on the site-based decision for the principals. Sometimes the literacy specialist assists with that, sometimes instructional coaches. Quite often, it's the teachers who are doing the fast bridge screener.
So it's always, it still continues to be a one-on-one screener?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
And that brings up my next thought. Our teachers are saying to us very loud and clear that they feel overwhelmed. And I can tell you, as an insider, as a principal, when we did the fast bridge screening, for a teacher to try to screen a student individually with an entire classroom, that really is difficult. That's a difficult task. And even for a literacy specialist or instructional coach, that's a great responsibility. So I just have a thought about that. This is, this is something that I feel would be very helpful, that I did to help my teachers and support them. When the teachers are doing this screening, and as a board possibly we could help, is if we provide some funding for substitute teachers to work with the classroom while the teacher, and I really think it's important for the teacher to do the screening, because they have an opportunity to learn a lot about each student in their classroom. That can be the foundation for their teaching and what they need to do to individualize for each student. If we could look at providing some, excuse me, some funds to support substitutes to work with the rest of the class while the teacher does that in a quiet space with each student, I think that would be funds really well spent, and I think it would send a message to our teachers that we care about you, and we care about the stress and the pressure you're under, but yet we really want to support this, this program because we feel like it's beneficial. So I know, Dr. Royster, you didn't hear that, but I was just mentioning, you know, I think this is a great tool as a principal, I felt like it was a great tool. But the issue lies, it's done screening one-on-one individually with students, that teachers feel overwhelmed when they're screening and they have the rest of the class in the room. That's very difficult. That's a difficult task. So I was just recommending or suggesting that possibly we look at in the future providing some funds for substitutes so that the teachers can screen individually in a quiet spot while someone else takes over the classroom. I don't, I don't know how much that would cost, but I think that would be well worth, well worth funding.
And I think our, I think that's certainly a good idea, but our challenge there, really, quite honestly, isn't the cost. Our challenge there is the availability of substitute teachers. We could probably fund the cost of those substitutes through any of a number of methods, maybe even using some of that reading money that we get from the state, because it's tangentially related to carrying out the reading program. But we'd be talking about, gosh, kindergarten and...
First grade.
First grade together.
In some second.
Maybe 1,000 teachers, or under 1,000.
That would be, yeah.
Because we have our smallest ratio in the first grade. So maybe 800 teachers, and we've got a window in which we have to do it. So the challenge is finding a sufficient number of substitutes within that window. There would be some schools where it would probably be reasonably easy to do that, other schools would be extremely challenging to do that. And just the overall total number, I think, would be the challenge. Certainly a good idea, and we can look at ways to do that, but I think that would be our inherent challenge with it.
Yes, sir. I know that would be a challenge. I can just say, as a principal, I pay for substitutes out of local funds in order to provide that, to keep my teachers from feeling overwhelmed. And that, that goes a long way for school climate and helping the teachers to feel supported. So I would really, really think it would be worth our while to really look into that and to see if there's any way possible that, that we can at least provide some supports for that. Maybe supplement the literacy coach and instructional coach with maybe a few subs, so that can be done and within that window. Just my suggestion. A second suggestion in regard to literacy instruction that I feel is very important, and I've always been concerned about children when they start school. A lot of parents don't realize, even when their child comes to kindergarten, that they're already behind, because they don't have those oral language skills. That's always been a real concern with me and something I feel like we really need to focus on as a board in our, in our areas that really have great needs in regard to students who lack oral language. As a principal, in the spring, after registration, we always had, what we did is we wrote a letter to our kindergarten parents, and we asked them to come to a session in the spring at school where we actually, I spoke, and the kindergarten teacher spoke, and we talked to them about what they could do over the summer to support their entry, and to let them know some things that we kind of expect from them when they come into kindergarten. And that was really beneficial. You know, that requires some coordination and, again, some substitute funds. But it's a great strategy, it worked really well. Parents were really shocked and really surprised at some of the things that would be really helpful to their children. So I think that would be something that would really be worthy of discussing or looking at. I think it would be worth our time. Thank you.
That's a great suggestion, Dr. Stiles. And just to, to remind you, I know that you're aware that our early bird registration for kindergarten and first grade has actually begun, and that is, is for that exact reason, so that principals can begin to identify students who will be incoming in the fall to make those connections with those families ahead of time.
Thank you so much. I'm going to try to get through this without hacking up a lung. I have several questions that are kind of all over the place. I'll just piggyback off what Dr. Stiles started asking. So I had a question about, are we setting our teachers up to succeed? Are we training them in the programs that were, I mean, adequately? Because I realize some teachers are probably more skilled with, working with at-risk students than others. Are we, how are we with our class sizes? Because I'm going to be real honest, this will lead to another question. In the fourth grade, I pulled my son out of school and basically had homeschooled him for a year and a half because he was in a classroom with 27 students. He was a reading, a dyslexic student. At the time, and I'm sorry, I'm asking a lot of different questions. I'm understanding we're recognizing dyslexia as a, a reading disorder now, correct? Because there was a time when parents would come to me and say, we do not recognize dyslexia in Greenville County schools. And so I have not kept up on that because my kids are beyond that.
Yes, Act 213, that legislation that's in place does identify students with dyslexia, and then we offer intervention, reading intervention for students who have any sort of reading disability or any sort of reading gaps.
Okay, so going back to class sizes, my biggest concern was, he had a wonderful teacher, and I think for that reason, she had a classroom full of students just like him, which I would consider higher-risk students from a reading perspective. So are we, how are we balancing that at the elementary level right now with our class sizes and our, I mean, I don't, I don't really know. I have a lot of concerns about that, because I also hear from teachers, I have a lot of teacher friends who really, really struggle with the demands that we're placing on them. And obviously, reading is such a big deal, so...
Class size at fourth grade is smaller than it would have been, that would have been for your child 10 years ago? Is that about...
No, it would have been about, let's see, he's a senior now, so I don't do math that quickly, but seven years ago?
Okay.
Or, no?
Our class size is a little bit smaller.
Yeah, eight years ago.
We began putting reading interventionists in place, Jeff, in 2000?
I think it was six years ago, right when I took over, we started putting them in place.
So we had, we did not have reading interventionists then, i.e. teachers to pull out or push into the classroom to intervene with students with struggling reading issues. We allocate those positions based on the standardized test scores for reading by each elementary school. Now during COVID, with Ezra funds, we dramatically increased the number of interventionists. It did not stick solely with that formula to assign them. So we have more of them right now than we have ever had before. Those would be two big changes. Also, the summer reading camps would have grown in intensity in that period of time. We did some summer reading back then, nowhere near the level and intensity of what we do now as far as duration and number of students that we serve throughout the summers. All of those things would have been different from your experience a few years ago. I may have missed some things, Jeff.
No, sir. I think that was, the reading intervention is the big thing, and we did, I don't remember what year it was, Dr. Royster, we did reduce the class size, the upper elementary class sizes, and how, and when...
Um, and when we add teachers, based on board action a couple of years ago, when we add teachers to a class, not always during the year, of course, because it's difficult to find.
And we changed the assignment factor from plus three to plus two.
Correct.
So if you go two over, uh, what, because at elementary, we do allocation by grade, by actual grade level. Middle and high, we don't at schoolwide. So it's a different ratio for each grade level. For example, the one at first grade is like seventeen, seventeen to one. When you hit two over that in every class in your particular school, we add a teacher, which in effect drives the actual ratio, probably ends up being on average between minus one and minus two off of the allocation formula district-wide.
Okay. I knew we'd been successful with that in first grade because I knew our first grade ratios are really good.
Well, and the, and the decision there was based on that, two things. One, trying to get it to the number that the research says it makes a difference for student, difference for student achievement. If you're above fifteen, there is not research that in case there's a difference in student achievement. Now, is it an enhanced working condition for a teacher? It is. The fewer students you have, it enhances the working condition. It becomes a part of recruiting and retaining teachers. But as far as academic attainment of students, you've got to hit fifteen or less per teacher for it to make a significant difference. So we made that recommendation number years ago that we focused continued reduction on the first grade because of its importance to the foundations of reading and, uh, math. And we believed we could get the number down below, uh, or to fifteen at some point, which financially, we'd never be able to do that throughout the elementary grades.
Okay. So then going back to like our teacher training, like preparing our teachers. I know we do stuff in the summer. And I remember when my, my oldest son was in elementary school when I believe we adopted the Fountas and Penel, uh, methodology or curriculum. I don't know what they call it. And I actually remember, you may not want to hear this feedback, but a teacher feeling not prepared to deliver, to, they felt like they were training at the same time they were delivering or implementing. So are we, how, where are we on our, all of our, because I saw lots of different, looked like we had, hold on, something called Reading Horizons. It's an Orton-Gillingham based. I don't know what level of literacy instruct, I mean, or obviously, there's obviously curriculums within those. So I don't know who to ask that question to, training wise.
So we offer year, year-round training for teachers. And so we work very closely with, uh, building leadership to identify the specific resources that they use. And I apologize, I'm trying to get to that slide. Right there. Um, we use, uh, we use our connection with the district or with the principals at each building to identify the resources that they're using. And our academics team offers professional development from a district lens as well as school-specific, site-based support for groups of teachers. It could be individual teachers. It could be small groups of teachers or grade levels. And then also, we work with instructional coaches to help instructional coaches have the capacity to be able to coach teachers at the building level. Because we know that our, as an academics team, we don't have the bandwidth to be in every school every day. So we prepare our building leadership to be able to support teachers with those needs and to be able to offer then their own targeted, site-based professional development, again, based on the specific needs of the students in those schools.
So am I understanding that different schools might have different programs depending on
The needs of their children.
The needs of their students?
The needs of their children.
So they're not all using the same things?
That, that is true. So, so our framework, that literacy framework can be taught. Those different components can be taught using a variety of different resources. We have some, a variety that we recommend and that we support, and we have offered professional development on. And we offer lesson plans and unit plan support for those resources because we've worked with them. We're very familiar with them. But schools may have the autonomy to use differing things as long as they're research-based, as long as they're in the What Works Clearinghouse, and we work directly with those schools. If they have a specific need or a specific area that they're concerned about, we work very closely with them to either, uh, help support them with the implementation of a resource that we are very familiar with. Or if there is another research-based best practice, then we evaluate that with them as well.
Okay. So then do we do internal, I'm assuming, data collection too? So you have two schools that are trying to meet the needs of their student groups, and they've chosen two different paths to do that.
Yes.
Are we data collecting to see which one's more successful?
Yes.
Because, I mean, obviously, they could both be research-based programs, but there could be one that's actually better than the other.
There is. Um, I think again, it goes back to that complexity of the, the needs of the student, that we could have different resources and based on the student needs, based on the teacher's skillset for implementation of those. There's a lot of different things that, that we have to analyze and investigate. Uh, and before, we would be able to say one is overtly better than another because we would really need to look at the specific fidelity of each of those programs, the number of minutes that students receive, the number of students that required additional intervention. There's a lot of different considerations from that before we'd be able to say that one is inherently better than another. But yes, that is data that we continuously collect and evaluate.
Dr. Stevens, would it be correct to say there are certain components that if they're present in a reading program, it will be an effective program?
Yes, sir.
So as long as they meet, they, they have that commonality of structure, no matter which one it is.
Correct.
No matter whether, what model you buy, so to speak. Then it has to do with a couple of things, I guess, or maybe more than two things. But one, the felt fidelity with which you implement it. Do you follow the program? Do you dedicate enough time to the instruction of reading? Do you have that permeate all the other instruction that you're carrying out in the classroom? And are you constantly, of course, this is a feature of all those programs that it's one of the commonalities, that you're constantly assessing and reassessing where individual students are because that changes almost on a daily basis. So you have to constantly group and regroup. You've got to have the materials for them to read, and it has to be materials that appeal to their interest. We invested all kind of money in materials for that purpose. We give greater autonomy where schools are performing well. We have some schools where we are very prescriptive in what you must do because their performance is lacking. You're going to see a presentation on that, I believe that's next month. Mr. McCoy?
Yes.
So more specifically addressing where there are deficiencies perhaps in particular schools, where they have less freedom to select, uh, what they need to, what they should use for reading instruction. But a lot of it depends on what students come to us with or what they come to us lacking. We also have a challenge of, it's a really bigger challenge, I think, than we actually realized when we looked at some numbers earlier this fall. The transience of our students in the early grade levels. The huge percentage, we looked at one particular school that we're having some really serious academic challenges. And I think, Jeff, if I remember correctly, seventy-five percent of the students in the fifth grade in that elementary school didn't start there. Seventy-five percent of them. And they're moving frequently during out, during the year, which is, has less to do with the teacher, but has a lot to do with the teaching. So that, that's a huge challenge. There's not a really good solution to that. The other, you'd like to think that if you, if we hired you as a first-year teacher and you came from, uh, I'll not pick a particular university because I don't want to hear any football analogies. We've heard enough of them. From, if you came from Acme University, you, you would assume that you had been taught the appropriate principles of the teaching of reading. And you might assume that Acme and Ajax and RD Web, all those universities taught reading, taught the teaching of reading the same way. I believe our experience would be that's not the case. So they don't come to us with this inherent skillset of they know how to effectively teach reading or effectively implement the particular program that's in use at the school they're in. So then we need to do staff development with them. This, this presents the next challenge. When do we do that? They're under contract for a hundred and ninety days. One hundred of eighty of which their students are present. Then they have five work days, five professional development days. Any other time we would take them would be either on their time in the summer or we'd have to pull them out of class to work with them during the year. Or there are two, there are two challenges to that. One, not getting enough, we can't get enough substitutes. But more importantly, if we could get enough substitutes, we're pulling them out away from the instruction of students with students who need more instruction, not less. And a substitute, we have some wonderful substitute teachers. But all the research in the world shows you that the absence of a teacher on any day diminishes student learning. The regular teacher, even if it's a great substitute, maybe a certified teacher, cares about the students, just, it just diminishes learning for those students. One of the things that I think would be extremely helpful, and I think there's, I understand there's been legislation introduced to pay for some more teacher staff development days. I don't know whether that will happen or not. There are actually, by statute, unless it's been repealed, and I don't think it has, uh, teacher, uh, teacher work days were increased from a hundred and ninety to a hundred and ninety-five about twenty years ago. The statute said pending state funding. Never been funded. That would have a tremendous positive effect on being able to do work with teachers. For example, we run that huge staff development program in the summer at one of our schools, a summer academy. But we have maybe twelve, thirteen hundred teachers to attend it, Jeff? Because they're, they're having to come on their own time, so to speak. A, a week of intensive instruction that we're able to pay them for, that, that would have a marked effect. So there are a lot of challenges around it. So we're constantly trying to do workarounds of, of each of those challenges. So you've got a really complex, the, the nature of how children learn to read is complex. The nature of how you teach them to learn to read is complex. And then there are all these complex external factors that create further barriers. None of which is, is an excuse for it. It just, all these things you have to consider and try to figure ways around them, over them, through them, whatever. And that, and hopefully that was kind of a, a point of today, is this is this hugely complex issue. I think we're making good progress with it, but we're not where we need to be.
To that point, I love that we staffed up with reading interventionists with our ESSR funding. But obviously, that funding is not forever. So are we expecting to be able to maintain those staffing levels? Are we still carrying those extra interventionists?
We, we will carry them through the duration of ESSR funding, which would be through the summer of twenty-four. So we have, uh, one more full year and the summer of twenty-four, which we could use some of it. We reached a point, we couldn't hire enough of them.
Correct.
Those were some of the openings we had at the beginning of the year. Because we added two hundred and
It was three hundred total.
Three hundred total.
Across elementary and middle.
Including middle school.
Three, three hundred total interventionists in elementary and middle? Are we still at that level?
We're probably thirty-five below that.
Yeah, minus the ones we couldn't hire. Okay. And so we don't know whether we're going to be able to keep them based on future budget.
Well, we would hope that the trend continues, that we've reached pre-pandemic levels. You know, we're at about sixty-four percent of the schools have, our schools have. That at the end of twenty-four, that will be hopefully a hundred percent, which should diminish the need, but we still may have a greater need than we have had. And that would become part of our general fund budget recommendation for that year.
Okay. That's what I was
We, we have add, eh, not every year, but most years we've added some of those, uh, teaching positions. If it was a small number, they just were included in, uh, positions for growth because the test score result, which is how we assigned them, it indicated we needed like three more or four more. So a small number like that, we'd probably pick up personnel for growth. If it were a larger number, we'd probably bring that forward as a separate request.
Okay. I think that's where I was getting at.
And remember, Ms. Mosley too, we will revert back, we have already funded recurring interventionists that's above that three hundred, but interventionists from both the state, they provide interventionists as far as the reading, um, to succeed. And then interventionists that the board has added on top of that, um, recurring.
Right. Because I mean, I'm looking at these numbers, and I understand what you're saying, Dr. Royster, about the difference, moving from kindergarten to first grade, but we're still looking at us, half our students not being,
Exactly.
I mean, being at risk. Let's just say at risk of some kind. So that.
Then what, what we need to look at, we probably should have put that in here, is what they look like then, second, third grade. Because you'll, you'll see some, a change in that status that won't go up. Because when you get second or third grade, you're then, you're then measuring ability to read, not these two distinct. I mean, letter names, that's a part of learning to read, but it's not the full measure of, of reading. So we, we, we make in progress there, obviously not at the pace or number that we're satisfied with. But you know, if we had five percent of students at that high risk, we wouldn't be satisfied with that either.
Okay. And my last question, I'm going to bounce back to one of the first, first slides. I think Dr. Stiles touched on this, the, the building blocks of successful reading where you have that oral language at the bottom?
Yes.
Okay. And I think I heard you say something about the youngest, I guess I'm thinking K-four age, surrounding them with, with language, correct? Is that what I heard you describing that?
So oral, the development of oral language is, um, something that we focus on in K-three, K-four, and kindergarten. That's really where we're working on the student's ability to, uh, receive information, articulate information, and be able to, the cognitive processes required to carry on a conversation, to express opinion.
Okay. So this might be a good question for, um, for Ms. Hogan. You will know that when I was advocating for my son at a very, very early age, when he was struggling with expressive language skills, it was extremely important for him to be, for me, to have him in a general education setting, surrounded by language all day long. I thought his language development was, his receptive language was so much greater than his expressive language at that time. And so wanting him to be surrounded by verbal children, children engaged in, like you said, typical developmental conversations was extremely important to me. I'm still hearing from my special ed world that we still, at times, when we're looking at placements for children, are surround, are putting them in situations where we're taking a child that's non-verbal, for example, or not very expressive, and putting them in settings where everyone else shares that same challenge. And I'm a big believer of surrounding children, especially children who have speech delays and or language delays with language. I mean, all day long. And are we making progress with our, I mean, how are we addressing those needs? Because obviously, you, this is a, a building block of successful reading. And I, I just, I, I don't know. I, I, I just got a call the other day about this with the, with the placement that we're working on with a child. And I'm not in the special ed advocacy world anymore, but I still get those phone calls. So that's why I'm just, I'm, I'm asking that. I don't even know really what my question is. I just feel like that, I just, I must just want, I want to issue it as a goal or a challenge for our, our special ed staffing folks to to think about that all the time.
Certainly. And, and I think, Ms. Mosley, I can't give you a number to say X amount of non-verbal students are, are in, you know, certain type of programming. What I can tell you is that definitely would be the same philosophy that we would want students with students that would have the maximum communication potential. I will also say that when we change the classes, the structure of the classes to not be disability-specific, and that was part of the goal to that because there was this belief that if you had, even when we had classes that were specifically for students with autism and classes that were specifically for students with hearing impairment, that was part of the problem was you would be putting students of all similar communication in a room and not have models. So changing to the Multi-Cat in those self-contained placements, that changed some of that. But certainly, we're always looking for opportunities to, you know, our goal is to keep them in gen, they're gen ed students first as much as possible. And we, we work daily at that. I, I certainly can have folks look into the specific case that you're talking about. Like, I, I just can't give you a number to say.
Well, I guess I just want it to remain at the forefront every's mind, everyone's mind. Because oftentimes, especially when we're talking about a self-contained classroom that doesn't have as much interaction with a gen ed student, for example, with the lit, I, I guess I'm just, I worry about that all the time. I just, I'm, I've lived it. I know how important language, being surrounded by languages every day. My son turned out to be an excellent reader, and what's his expressive language caught up with his receptive, you know? But I just really want that to be a focus of ours. So, okay. I'm, I'm good, Ms. Bush. Thank you.
Dr. Stevens and Mr. McCoy, kudos on this, on this model. A couple of things stood out to me. Thank you for sharing your research base. That's always really important. The intentionality and how it's structured and specifically your commitment to ensuring that writing is present. Where I've been, I've seen that fall into the ditch quite a good bit. And so its presence there and the fact that it, it remains a focus is, is extremely encouraging. I just have one question. Based on the new ELA standards that are headed our way, how disruptive, if at all, to this model do you feel like those will be?
We are currently working ahead in terms of we actually have someone who is on the writing committee. And so we have a little bit of a preview to what we anticipate the standards to look like and feel like for our teachers. And we actually currently, this past year, we introduced two additional curriculum maps for a total of three ELA maps. And so we believe that while the new standards will be a lift, our academics team feels like we will be able to work with coaches and curriculum writers, teachers who are master teachers to be able to prepare a curriculum map that implements those new standards fairly, I won't, I won't use the word quickly, but with a very quick turnaround, as quick as possible, but also making sure that it is what it needs to be to support our teachers and students in the classroom.
Thank you.
I will add, Dr. Presley, that I think it goes back to something Ms. Mosley asked about too, is that I think as, as Dr. Royster alluded, the complexity of reading instruction, one professional development is never going to be enough for a teacher to master. So I think to what, I don't know if Dr. Stevens mentioned it, but that, that ongoing and having more time with teachers, the teaching of reading in particular is so complicated that it's not, I mean, I was in a meeting last, or two weeks ago with a school where they were looking at their core, correlating data and realizing that maybe a teacher did not quite know how to do the fast bridge, I mean, the FNP benchmarking, because the, the data was off. And so going back down that circle, down that teacher again, the train. So I just want to emphasize that, like unlike some things, it's, you can do a one or two or three hour training and they got it and they move. Reading is something, instruction, training is something we constantly have to do. And so when we have a big change like that, the, the standard changes, you know, that's an intensive, multi-year process of trying to get people trained up to deliver it the way you want them to deliver it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Stevens, for this presentation. We know that reading is important, very important. I have a couple of questions from where y'all had given some information. With the, moving from the balanced reading to the science of reading, how does balanced literacy fit in that? Cause you said we moved from balance, from, from the balanced reading to the science of reading. How does the program that we have fit in that? Or have we gotten some more programs to go with that? To go with the science of reading?
So recalling that these are, are really instructional philosophies and not necessarily specific curriculums. The balanced reading incorporates each of those different components, the phonics work, vocabulary comprehension, those. And so our current methodology, which includes the science of reading, the, the neuroscience behind what connections a child needs to make, we're actually able to use our current resources and the variety of resources that we offer schools to teach each of those components using research-based practices.
So what we have in it?
Yes, so, yes ma'am. If we look at this graphic right here, it really shows you that within each of those components of our day, the instructional day for our children, they are, are being exposed to practices that support the science of reading, the best practices that we know to allow children to make those cognitive and neuroscientific connections to read.
Okay, so fast bridge, you said it's only one data set. What, what is another data set that we have? That we use on those levels?
Are you asking specifically for primaries? So in kindergarten, we have anecdotal notes. We are continuously training our teachers and our teaching assistants to work in small groups with children to do letter inventories and sound inventories in addition to fast bridge. So that when we receive fast bridge data, again, we're able to triangulate that. As you know, five-year-old childrens are a little inconsistent sometimes. On Monday, they may recognize an A and by Thursday, they're recognizing it as a K. And so we began that documentation to be able to identify the frequency with which children can incorrectly identify letter names and letter sounds. And then when we, so when we receive that fast bridge data, we're able to look holistically at the, at the body of evidence that we have for a child's mastery in that. We also then have the early learning standards, which are, again, standards that are specific to kindergarten that have to do with some of those oral communication skills, some of the things that may not show up on the fast bridge results. So at the kindergarten level, it's not necessarily a standardized assessment in addition to fast bridge. As much as it is, we do use FNP levels for, for children for both kindergarten and first grade. But again, it is really more at the primary level, that body of teacher expertise to identify the specific deficits or, or strengths that a child has.
Okay, you mentioned something about a MTSS coordinator.
Yes, ma'am.
Does every, I'm sure every school has that, but do they go through extra training in order to be that coordinator?
Yes, ma'am.
To train the teachers within the school?
Yes, ma'am. We, Ellen Hampshire, Dr. Hampshire is our MTSS coordinator for the district, and she works very closely with our coaches. And each different school usually utilizes either a coach or an instructional coach or even an assistant principal to hold that responsibility for the on-track model or the MTSS model. And so we work closely with them. We have trainings with them to not only analyze the data, but then to also align that with the specific intervention that's appropriate.
So when they take on these other roles, these coordinator roles, do they get a stipend for those? Or is that a part of another duties as assigned?
At the elementary level, we, we do not offer stipends for that, but a lot of that responsibility falls within the nuance of the role, meaning a lot of literacy coaches actually request that role because then they are working hand in hand with the data and the children.
So every school has a literacy coach, right?
Yes, ma'am, yes. Elementary, elementary, yes.
Do we have enough support positions in this district for, for these? We do have that. What I wanted to know is, is it a part of the general fund? Or do we use discretionary funds for that? It's part of general fund?
Yes, ma'am. The state actually has a, a state provided literacy coach at each location, at each elementary location.
When I was at the conferences, we, somebody asked the EIA funds that Riley put into effect a long time ago.
Excuse me one moment. I'm, I have three more speakers, so without objection, I'm going to stand for 15 minutes, please. Thank you.
The, aren't those for, I know that the, the state provides a state position for first grade, right? Is that, is that from the EIA funds, Jeff?
The, are you talking about the literacy coach?
No, the, the, they always provide one state-funded teacher at first grade. Is it at first grade?
I'm not aware of that.
Do, do, do they still? What does the EIA funds provide for?
A fraction of what it once did. When the EIA was, was enacted in, what, '84? I'm a long in there. It was designed to supplement the current level of state funding. And it, some portions of it were based on academic performance. So if your schools performed below an acceptable level, whereas they had some academic challenges, there were EIA funds that were allocated to the districts for that purpose. And that lasted until, it probably began to decline, Robin, 10, 12 years ago. And it basically doesn't even exist anymore.
So we don't have the state-funded position at first grade anymore?
I'm not sure what you're particularly referring to there.
We have the special revenue funds, we have the general funds, but we had a state-funded first grade position.
It could have been, I think, well, you referenced it, based on your experience in a school, there could have been a first grade position in that school that was funded through EIA. There would have, there might have been one in a neighboring school that was in the third grade that was funded by EIA. All that's gone. Most of EIA has been rolled up in the last several years to EIA salary supplement. I, we got that money to help pay teacher salaries. There, there is some EIA funding left. Robin, $3, $4 million, does that sound right? A little bit more than that for the, that kind of exists for academic remediation, maybe. But it's a very small amount of the total EIA fund, which is one penny off the state sales tax.
That's right.
The bulk of it, we get to offset teacher salary increases. Probably to the tune of...
So it's not for the classroom?
$20,000, $23 million, Robin, does that sound right?
So it's not for the classroom anymore like it used to be? It's just for teachers?
Well, it is, but it's being spread amongst all teachers to pay part of their salary. It is not the, it is not following the original intent of EIA.
Okay, Jeff, the question, when you talked about the at-risk schools with, I have, are, how, how do we work with the schools that are not at-risk but have at-risk students? Do we, do we have special programs or special people in place in those schools for that?
So it depends on, not special folks in the school necessarily. Every, every school, as you mentioned, has a reading coach. So those, and those folks are trained by Dr. Hampshire, Dr. Stevens, to go back and work specifically with at-risk students in their school, because every school has at-risk students. It just depends on how many that happens to be. Our team, as you know, and we'll talk about in January, our team works heavily with the focus schools that would be in what we would consider tier three, needing intensive intervention for underperformance. So that's where the Title I specialists come in for those Title I schools, where we're able to put more resources from Title I and federal funds. The, outside of the title schools, any other school support would be just with the, with the specialist that Dr. Stevens oversees or the specialist that Dr., or that Tara Dean oversees at the secondary level. And we deploy those as needed. And we also, I won't say it's always school initiated. We look at data and if we see a trend in a school that we're concerned about, even though they may not be a focus or support school, then we'll reach out to that school and say, we think we need some, you know, what do you think about some work on reading or math or whatever happens to be?
Well, that's what I want to know about the ones that are not considered the at-risk schools, but they do still have at-risk students in those schools, what we're doing for them. And I, I want to know the data on that.
Yeah, so I would, I would say too, and I'm sure, I, I know they did this when you were at Cherrydale too, but they, almost all of our schools, I'm aware of, have some way of tracking individual students today. I was at Tigerville last week in their data room, and they have individual kids in blocks and where they are as far as reading deficits and math deficits. And they talk about, I was in the kindergarten meeting with the principal, and we're talking about moving children, which ones have made progress and which ones can we take off the board? That's a very common process in, in our elementary schools to track individual students for data. And then typically when they hit a wall, then is when they're going to call us in, outside the focus schools, they're going to call us when they hit a wall to say, we're really struggling in this, whatever area of ELA it is, we're really struggling, we think we need some work with our teachers on this. But the data would be similar, Ms. Gahl, based on the, what Ms. Stevens said, or Dr. Stevens said, in the early grades is going to be a little bit more anecdotal. Once you get up, cross past that third grade, it's going to be a lot more standardized assessments and data that we have.
Every elementary, every elementary school does have students who are in reading intervention groups. And so those groups, the frequency of those groups is dependent on the specific students within that school.
Okay, with, with the testing, with the fast bridge testing, I know we were talking about that earlier. Now, I know that the volunteers, the tier two volunteers, have we ever thought about getting the, the parent volunteers to come in and, and while the teacher is testing, since we, since the subs are, you know, out of, out of the window? Have we ever thought about that? Because I know they have to go through the, the, to be a tier two volunteer. You have to do certain things in order to come in the schools.
I think to, I think, yes, I think there's a lot of ways the schools have, have done that. I, I agree with Dr. Stiles that in, and again, in a meeting earlier this year, a school had, who had not, the teachers had not done the testing, were now going back and realizing maybe that was a mistake because they did not know the kids, at Dr. Stiles' point, they didn't know the kids because they didn't do the testing. So you're learning, you have to learn that regardless. So you're either learning it while you're doing the fast bridge testing or you're learning it, have to take the time and learn it at some other point. So I think the, the literacy coaches, the reading coaches, for the time it takes to do that within the school, there are some schools that have worked it out. Whether they bring in some subs, they do literacy coach, reading coach, instructional coach. You can use some interventionists for those few days that you need to do that testing, because it's not a tremendously long amount of testing that, that needs to be done. So I definitely think, Ms. Gahl and Dr. Stiles, we need to continue to work with schools on, best practice really would be teachers doing it because then they get a feeling for their kids. And here's some ways, being a little bit more transparent or offering up some ways, here's some maybe ways and people you can use to do this even within your own school, to not lose instructional time. Because I see the reading coach, they certainly can continue on lessons and teaching or doing small groups, pull out with kids. That would be beneficial for instruction as well.
Thank you, Dr. Stevens. That's all.
Okay, Ms. Goodman, call while, Mr. Cochran.
Dr. Stevens, thank you for the presentation. I wanted to go back for just a minute to the fast bridge. And I understand that that has a social, emotional learning component to it. And my question is, I guess basically two questions. Are we making use of that component? And if so, how are we using it?
In kindergarten and first grade, we are not using, we are specifically looking at specific indicators. And so we are specifically focusing on letter names and letter sounds in kindergarten. And then in first grade, we are primarily looking at the reading skills.
Okay, so are we using it in the later grades? Or are we not using it at all?
We use it for some second grade students and at, on occasion for third grade students who may be transitioning into us that we're not familiar with. We don't have a body of data to support their current present levels. So we may on occasion use it for second and third grade students for reading proficiency. But not, it's not a, a general practice.
Thank you.
Mr. Cochran, Ms. Lopez-Wales.
Stevens, thank you for your presentation. It was very, very, it's very important because reading is so important. If the children are experiencing difficult, difficulty and they're not learning and we don't meet these needs, then eventually they're not going to be successful because it's the, it's, it's the foundation to everything. They can't read math problems, et cetera. Are we seeing more cases with dyslexia now than we have in the past?
I don't know that I could speak to that with, without having the data in front of me to be able to look holistically at, at the trends. I believe that we have, because we have additional supports in place and, and we have worked very hard as a district to eliminate stigma over any sort of instructional need, that we, we are more focused on identifying children at an early age. So I, without having the numbers in front of me, I wouldn't be able to give you specific trend data. But I do believe because we are proactive in identifying at-risk students, students, my gut would tell me there may be an increase for, for that reason, as well as possibly other reasons.
That, that's understandable. I, I get that. Ms. Hogan, I, I, I can't remember exactly, but there was a parent that spoke at our last board meeting, and it was about her daughter that had special needs situations and experienced great things in school. And I think once she moved to middle school, she was sent to a different school and there was non-verbalization. And the child instead of progress, regressed. And they, I think, I just can't remember everything. When Ms. Mosley was talking about a situation, it just sparked that. I, I would, if, if you did a follow-up with that parent, I'd love to know what the results were. I think they pulled her out, they tried to get her in another school that met the needs because she was, she went from flourishing to, uh, not a good situation. I don't know what the follow-up is on, on how y'all handle when parents come and speak at our board meetings. I know, and Dr. Royster, please address this, I know that someone contacts them, but...
Someone spoke this past week, and then Ms. Fitzer sent me the question in writing, and I responded, and I believe that you received that in your notification from the superintendent.
Did I get that? When did, when did that?
Yesterday.
Oh, yesterday. Well, there, there was so much going on yesterday with the child that disappeared at Lee, and I probably didn't read it.
But that's the process, just so you know, is that if someone speaks, Ms. Fitzer gives us the question to the appropriate person and we respond.
And you did follow up and we have that information?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, because that's really important. I don't want any child that is flourishing to move on to the next level and then we put them in a situation where everything that they experience success just, just is demolished. And, and, and we put them in a situation and they, they're, they're the top in the class, which is not, not where they need to be. They need to be challenged continuously. And I, I just want to make sure we stay on top of that. I did like your, I loved your example of the compost pile. Um, I, I love that because my husband does that, and it drives me crazy because he throws his stuff in the yard and he, he does exactly that, the apple cores, the bananas and the eggshells, which drive me crazy because I'm thinking snakes are going to come around and try to feed off of that. He goes, no, this is healthy. Anyway, I read it, I comprehended and I understood it and I answered that question. Uh, so I liked the challenge, it was good. I, I think it's very important. So when we get children who choose not to do kindergarten and fourth grade and, uh, 4K and so forth, we test them though when they come in and we find out that they're behind, is that correct? Is that what you were saying there?
When a child enters Greenville County, regardless of what grade they're entering with, part of that first, um, relationship build between the teacher and the student is to, to identify where their strengths and weaknesses are. And so we do that in a variety of different ways depending on the grade level. We don't inherently automatically test, say, an arriving second grader. That's kind of a natural progression when we do those first reading groups and we'll do some FMP data. So if they're in kindergarten and first grade, they'll go through fast bridge screening as part of our MTSS protocols. But for subsequent grades beyond that, it's, it's really part of that teacher's identification of, of where that child is in terms of their learning gaps or their learning strengths.
Okay, because I have heard of some children that came in second, third grade and it wasn't, you know, it wasn't detected.
Very typically, within the first 10 days, instruction, explicit instruction begins and that relationship has been built. And then teachers are pulling small groups and one-on-one groups. And within a very short period of time, a skilled teacher or an experienced teacher will be able to identify if there, there may be some difficulties or some gaps there. And then they...
Excuse me, just one moment, I still have two speakers left to speak. I'm going to, without objection, I'm going to extend for 10 minutes. Thank you.
And if there is any indication that rises, that a teacher presents, um, about a specific child, then they'll work directly with their MTSS team to identify next steps.
And so they're, they're screened three times during the year?
Yes.
Okay.
Kindergarten and first grade, yes.
Okay, thank you so much, great presentation, thank you. Ms. Levinas-Wales, there will be a pop quiz on that.
I have the answers if you need them.
That little test at the end. Next person on there is Ms. Doolan.
Thank you. Dr. Stevens, thanks for this presentation. Um, I, I wondered if, I don't expect anyone to know off the top of their heads, but I wondered if maybe we could get a report about how many of the schools that the standardized testing doesn't reflect that those students are meeting expectations for reading? How many of those schools have hefty 4K programs? And is there a correlation to how many children participate in 4K and test scores for those schools? Um, and I wondered if those 4K classes only accept children that have an identified delay or if they also accept, if there's room to accept children who are typically developing but may be identified as being at risk? Or is there room to accept all children from those communities that are four years old?
Dr. Stevens can speak directly to the qualifiers for pre-K, but there is a pre-K class or classes that serve all 51 elementary schools. Some are physically housed in the school. In fact, we're trying to move to a model where almost all of them are over time. The others are housed at centers, predominantly because we may not have room in the school, a good example that's close by, but we don't have pre-K at Augusta Circle. There is physically no room to have one there. So those students that would qualify pre-K that would go there, go to Greenville CDC. But Dr. Stevens can speak directly to the qualifiers. And we add, we have traditionally added pre-K classes every year. I don't think we had to add any this year because they were slightly under-enrolled, but we've added those as our population has grown over time, we, we have added proportionally pre-K classes every year.
Uh, we currently have over 80 4K classrooms serving Greenville County schools. And those are intended to serve at-risk students, but those risk factors are not just necessarily learning or cognitive delays. Those could be risk factors in terms of socioeconomic status, those could be risk factor, parental, educational level, if a child is in, um, foster care situation or DSS care. So there is a, a long list of different qualifiers for students and each one of those qualifiers carries a point value. And so when the parent applies for, uh, consideration for 4K, we, um, we add up all those points and then we ensure that we are serving the most at-risk students first. If we serve, get to a point where we have children who have no at-risk factors, but still we have space, we slide those children into those available spaces. Because our belief again is that early intervention and early exposure is a success predictor for children. So if we have available spaces and we have children who do not have risk factors, we will slide them in. And what, uh, Dr. Royster and I have, have noticed over the last, uh, two years is that there is a little bit of a geographic, um, variance in terms of, there are certain areas of Greenville County that we end up having no available, uh, spaces for non-risk students and then some areas of Greenville where we tend to have maybe upwards of, of 20% of our classrooms are made of non-risk students. So it really, um, it really varies from location to location.
If, maybe there's a stigma attached to some of the 4K classes if they are for only at-risk? And like, some of my colleagues have mentioned, students do well having typically developing role models in their class, so I, I wonder if increasing the number of spots for kids, especially at the schools that aren't performing well, might make a difference in the long run?
I, I would certainly advocate that early access to education, uh, is a predictor of student success. Uh, in the state of South Carolina and also specifically in Greenville, our, um, First Steps partners and some state funding has allowed for-profit daycare centers to have state-funded 4K classrooms. And so in Greenville County, when you look at the number of students who, um, may qualify for at-risk services, we, um, based on First Steps data that was released last December, we are actually over 100% in terms of availability, meaning that if a, a family demonstrates risk, um, if Greenville County, for example, may not have an available seat locally for that child, working with a partner through that First Steps network, we could likely find an available seat for that family. Um, so we really, as not just Greenville County schools, but Greenville County, the partnerships and network that we have in place here has really done a very good job with supporting at-risk 4K. But to your point, I do not disagree that 4K, uh, is a, is a benefit for, for children who attend.
Yes, I'm a huge advocate for early intervention as well. Um, my last question is, after, um, the fast bridge screenings, when students are identified as, um, having dyslexia or being potentially dyslexic, um, what, what comes next?
So based on that, uh, fast bridge screening, we go through again that triangulation of data. So that's when we begin to have those conversations with the teacher, with the parent, with the MTSS coordinator, with all of the stakeholders who have, have, um, insight to that child's, uh, skill sets or their needs. And we begin to have conversations, uh, quite often, you know, parents are advocates for their child, they may have, um, some background information on strengths and needs for that child. And so they begin a process of, um, the, the on-track process, they're either discussing further evaluation or trying some reading intervention. Um, so there's actually several different possible avenues, but that conversation begins with an analysis of all available data.
Well, is, is anyone tracking, I think it's, Pickens County has a magnet school now for dyslexic students?
There are some, some schools that specifically tailor to different learning disabilities throughout the state. Uh, in Greenville County, through the model that we provide with our tier two and tier three instruction and the different resources that we have, um, we have seen great success with students regardless of their, their learning disability. So we do not currently have a magnet program for that, but we believe that the resources that our interventionists are using are, are supporting our children.
Well, do you think that we would get to a point where there would be enough students to support having a magnet school for those that wanted it? It, I, I mean, I haven't actually followed Pickens County enough, I think their school is relatively new, so it might be too early to know how successful that school is.
I think one, we don't know what the success of that would be. I think we would also have the challenge of how we would get students to that location. Uh, you know, we, and Pickens County is fairly large, but geographically they're not as large as we are. You know, we, we got to think about students covering 800 square miles and how we would get them to that location. And would that in fact ultimately be best for them to take them out, put them in a special setting, then they come back into a different setting at whatever grade level they re-enter their zoned attendance area school or the school that they choose to attend as a middle school or, or even as an upper elementary school? I think there'd just be a lot of issues about that that, uh, that, that we don't honestly know the answer to based on things that are proven through longitudinal study and research to, to be effective. Now, we do know that the programs that we utilize with those students through longitudinal research are effective.
That's it, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Doolan. And we're almost out of time, but I have one more speaker, so I'm going to extend for five minutes without objection, Dr. Stiles.
Thank you. I just would like to share that sometimes as a board member, when we continue to extend time, sometimes I get a little frustrated with that. But when it comes to literacy instruction, I am so glad that we've had such rich conversations today and that we've continued to extend the time because certainly we all realize that this is one of our top priorities, is literacy instruction, is where it all begins for our students, is the foundation of success. I just wanted to speak to a little bit, um, certainly as a former principal, I believe in the autonomy of schools to make decisions. Uh, but I'm extremely interested in, um, the number of reading programs that some of our schools may have adopted. I know that, um, some of our Title I schools in particular, sometimes they're continually, um, like if they're low performing, at-risk, I heard you say we're going to have a future presentation, I'll be very interested in that about certain programs that they're, they're required to do. I guess my concern is when we have X number of programs, I wonder if we actually are doing ourselves more harm by watering down what we're doing. Uh, as a former teacher and educator myself, I know that sometimes one program, to really do it well and to develop your mastery, takes a lot of time, a lot of development, um, it's intensive. So I'm really concerned about some of our at-risk, possibly Title I schools who have multiple programs. Um, I'd be interested to know, do you have a master list of the schools and how many programs they're using? I'd really love to see that. And I really like to hope, uh, I want to ask this question, but that we ask the teachers that are in those schools that are using multiple programs, do you feel like you're developing mastery? Is this supportive of, of your students' needs? Or do you find yourself feeling overwhelmed and feel like you're not being successful at all? I think those are really important questions that must be asked. And I hope that we're doing that and I hope that we're listening to our teachers' voices and responses to that question, that's critical. So just my comment about that. And then I wanted to speak to early intervention, like Sarah and somebody have mentioned, I am a proponent of K-4 programs. I believe it is really important that we reach students who we know are in need of developing that oral language because that's, that's the first step in becoming a reader. So, uh, I'm going to speak just a, and I, again, I've been out of the, the principalship for several years, but I want to share one of my frustrations and I want to know if we're addressing this, if anything's changed since I've been a principal. We were talking about, you know, our programs, our K-4 programs should really, they should really target our most at-risk students. That's what they're for, to help get them on track, to help them be successful. Um, I, I don't always, to be honest, I, I didn't always see that. I saw a lot of children that were in the program that I felt like maybe were not our most at-risk. Here's what I saw. Um, you know, we had the screening, the schedule for K-4, and then at some point, that screening ended. That ended in the spring. And then at some point during the summer, I'd have this family come in to register. And they would have a young child, maybe four years old, who was obviously at risk, speech problems, was not able to make eye contact, always tried to engage in conversation. The parent inevitably would say they were interested in the K-4 program. These are the most at-risk, the transient families that move from place to place, that live from place to place, they come in. And then my heart would be broken because the screening had ended. As a matter of fact, we already had rosters for our K-4 program for the following year. And I've always said that if we really want to meet the needs of our most at-risk students, we've got to reserve, I understand that we've got business to do, we've got screening to take place, but we really should reserve some spots for those families because they're the most at-risk. I, I, I put money on the table on that. Now, if you're up in Blue Ridge in the rural part of the county, there's not going to be a First Steps program. There's not going to be anybody else to absorb that child. So I think that we really need to focus on what are we doing to make sure, to ensure that we reach those most at-risk, at-risk students who are developmentally behind, they lack language, they have a lot of needs. Uh, that always broke my heart and it, it was something I always said that I, I wanted to change as a board member. Um, and I'm not going to ask you openly to discuss that, but I, I want to encourage our district, our superintendent and our district office folks to really think about, are we reaching our most at-risk students? And if we're not, what can we do to catch those children like that? In areas like Blue Ridge, we don't have a First Steps program or a developmental program to catch them, what are we doing? We really need to balance that out and we really need to ask ourselves those tough questions.
I am happy to give further, uh, information, certainly in the future, but I can tell you that we absolutely do agree with you. Our pre-K leadership team two years ago began the practice of actually holding back some spots from every classroom, especially in our most transient and high-risk areas, so that if our cap class size is 22 or 23, that we hold at least two or three spots in each available classroom in those areas for that very reason. And then we maintain a waitlist of, of typically zero risk factor students, zero point risk factor students. And then we let parents know that, that their child's on a waiting list and as, of course, once the year begins and we get to the 10th day and subsequent, that we can fill those spots with zero risk children.
I'd like to see that take place at all schools, not just at those at-risk schools because they are at-risk.
That is general practice, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, I see a hand waving. I'm going to extend for five minutes without objection.
Yeah, this is not going to take long because I just want to put in a plug. And I've, I've spoken to, um, Dr. Royster about this before, but when I came into the district, we had family literacy, which was, you know, because the, the parent is the first teacher. And I would hope that we would try to bring some of that back, um, with, you know, with, with us having a overabundance of funds, extra funds, this, that and the other, because it used to be a, a federal program, we, we did it by grants, but family literacy was teaching the parents how to teach their kids up to the time that they got in school. And so I would hope that we could look into something like what we used to have, family literacy, because it was a great program. That's all I have to say, Debbie, I just wanted to put that plug in.
Thank you, Ms. Goodman-Callwell. No, seeing no further questions, I am to... No, seeing no further questions, I am to thank Dr. Royster, thank Mr. McCoy, and Dr. Stevens for excellent presentation, and I am going to turn it over at this point to Mr. Saylor's for our administration portion.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Ladies and gentlemen, our next item of business in order is item 4.01, A Report on Human Resources Actions Within the District. Dr. Royster. Thank you, Mr. Saylor. We've re-titled this, traditionally, we've done a hiring report each year, usually a little bit earlier in the fall than the month of December, but we began several years ago to include a lot of other information besides simply those actions related to hiring in that report. And the report that Ms. Clemens is going to share with you today reflects not just hiring, but the areas we have added in years past and some additional new areas, so it's a more encompassing, inclusive report of the actions of human resources. Having said that, I'll turn that over to Ms. Clemens.
Thank you, Dr. Royster. Thank you to our board and committee as a whole. I appreciate the time this morning to share this information with you. So as Dr. Royster said, the information that I'm going to share this morning is actions and activities that took place in human resources in preparation for year 21, '22. So hires processed, we had 560 instructional hires, 270 classified hires, 42 professional administrative hires, 528 hourly, 94 bus drivers and 50 bus aides, 384 adjunct or extended day positions, and 693 substitutes, for a total of 2,477 hires within the district. Specific HR actions completed, we had 52 hourly work group in-person orientation sessions, 27 substitute virtual orientation sessions, 114 salary work group virtual orientation sessions, 3,060 transfers, which includes 223 non-teaching to teaching transfers within the district, so that may have been aides or instructional individuals that wanted to be full-time teachers in the district and transferred into those positions, 2,328 separations, 37,495 applications with 30,735 external, 6760 internal, 1,288 long-term medical leave or military leave cases, 4,692 COVID leave forms or requests, 2,096 employee relation representative contacts, which does not include contacts for unemployment, accommodations, bonus payments, vaccine COVID questions, and 149 unemployment claims and multiple appeal hearings. Administrative hiring, these numbers reflect the principal-director's total hires for this year, for year 21, '22, total hires were 23. Total number of diverse hired candidates within that number is seven of the 23. For assistant principals, 31 total hires, with eight of the 31 being diverse hires, and our administrative assistant positions, 32, with four of the 32 being diverse hires. The administrative diversity statistics currently employed GCS leaders include, at the district office manager level, 17.82%, at the principal level, 20.45%, for the assistant principals, 28.95%, and administrative assistant, 24.14%. Teacher statistic updates, we had 945 teacher recertifications, 417 teacher degree level changes, 5,138 contracts renewed, 230 student teaching placements, and 648 practicum placements. Our recruitment team this year attended several recruiting events, have in place several recruitment initiatives, to include Ignite the Future Virtual Event for Student Teachers, the Virtual Winter Recruitment Event, the Shining Stars Virtual Recruitment Event, 15 in-state virtual recruitment fairs, with 29 out-of-state virtual recruitment fairs, Fall Early Teacher Recruitment Pool, state-approved alternative teaching preparation programs, which include GATE, PACE, CATE, and American Board, and Teachers of Tomorrow, GATE information sessions and recruitment events, international cultural exchange programs, placement service with Proximity Learning and Alliance, social media outreach and spotlight, so HR, Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, Handshake, and Indeed, advertisements in local and national publications and platforms, job boards for our alumni, and extended virtual program efforts in and outside of the district. The recruitment team attended 44 job fairs within this year, 11 in-state and 33 out-of-state. Of the 44 job fairs attended, 11 were HBCUs. The recruitment event for our virtual recruitment event that we host annually, which was virtually this past year, is our Shining Stars Virtual Recruitment Event. So some highlights from that event, at the middle and high school level, we had 128 participants. Each booth or school had a range of 5 to 47 candidates, with an average of 23. We had candidates attend from 14 states at the middle and high school level. At the elementary level, we had 164 participants, with each booth or school that had a range of 12 to 62 candidates, with an average of 24, representing attendance from 17 states. So our teacher retention efforts include our new teacher induction and mentoring program, community partnerships with Ten at the Top, Public Hire, the Greenville County Schools' social media pages featuring our employees, South Carolina Student Loan Forgiveness for Critical Needs in Subject Areas, with critical needs in geographic areas as well, public service loan forgiveness, our state-of-the-art facilities and resources, HR partnerships with district teacher cadet programs, professional development opportunities, district support for certification and recertification. Our continued focus on attracting quality educators includes teacher cadet visits for an early focus on teaching as a career, student-teacher interviews, internship certificates with collegiate partners, Anderson University, Francis Marion, Converse, North Greenville University, college and university career center emails, lists for all teacher preparation programs in South Carolina, North Carolina, and Georgia, Clemson University Teaching Resident and Master Teacher Model Program, an expressway to Tiger Town, Furman Teacher-to-Teacher Program, South Carolina Create to Increase Special Education Teacher Pipeline, and our GATE program to increase the teacher pipeline in critical need subject areas. In an effort to diversify the teacher workforce through alternative pathways, these are the numbers, you'll see a comparison from year '21 to '22, but the total number of individuals hired into the district from these programs, you'll see our GATE program first, in 2022, we had 70 hires with a 30% diverse hire rate. Through our PACE program, we had 15 hires with a 33% diverse hire rate. Through our CATE program, we had seven hires with 28% diverse rate. American Board, we had two hires. Teachers of Tomorrow, seven hires with a 29% diverse rate. International Teachers, 21 with 100% ethnically diverse backgrounds. And Converse Art, we had one hire. Our diversity statistics for our teachers hired, 109 of 560 hires were diverse candidates, and represented on this slide is the ethnically diverse representation of those hires. Our hourly work group statistics, our turnover in building services was at 18%, food and nutritional services, 29%, transportation, 25%. Open jobs at the beginning of school and building services, 63 positions, food and nutritional services, 42 positions, and transportation, 65. And job fairs held within '21 and '22 were 11, with 379 attendees. Our continued focus on attracting hourly work group employees includes the increase for the entry-level wage to $1,506 an hour, of which we're very appreciative that our board supported that. Full-time recruiter sharing information about open jobs across the state, monthly, sometimes more, job fairs, our employee referral incentive for transportation, our PAY-ACTIVE program, which allows quicker access for our employees to their paycheck, allowing employees to work in other areas, so perhaps fans working in building services, and this allows us to address the nine-month schedules. And we have also this year done Indeed-sponsored ads for our positions. So a focus on employee support, again, we have our Employee Assistance Program through Aspire, which continues to be a valuable resource for our employees. 555 employees and dependents were served through Aspire. Our employee relations specialists are a support to employees, and they refer them to EAP when the need arises. But our employer relations specialists are not only a support to employees that may call with a concern, those folks are a support to every level of employee with the district. EAP sessions included in Summer Academy in 2022 were improving our emotional intelligence with 61 attendees, building resilience during challenging times with 48 attendees, the power of positivity with 68 attendees, managing conflict in the workplace with 69 attendees, understanding the grieving process of impact at work, 31 attendees, and mental health in the workplace with 182 attendees. Additionally, our principals and supervisors attend civil treatment training and situational leadership training, which guides them and educates them on having those crucial conversations with their team members. And of course, when they find themselves in that situation, HR is always a partner So human resource focus for '22 and '23, we would like to prepare a GATE expansion to include elementary education certification, host a Call Me Mister High School Recruitment Showcase, partner with TeachSC to increase participation in traditional and non-traditional teacher preparation programs in South Carolina, expand hourly recruiting in Greenville and the surrounding markets, develop a salary administration handbook, develop an employee hiring handbook, expand professional development opportunities for non-instructional employees, and navigate and partner with an HR system upgrade. Some major accomplishments throughout the year include, in partnership with Ms. Stack's team members, PAY-ACTIVE, which allows daily, weekly access to earnings for our employees. Our salary study was completed, bonus payments were processed, additional pay steps were processed, our premier virtual recruitment platform was awarded, school employee support was provided during pandemic challenges, an on-track Greenville pilot for substitutes was completed. And this last slide shared a lot of information with you about items that were keyed in human resources, activities that were attended, and the things that happen on a daily basis. But behind that is this great group of individuals that do those things, and I am very appreciative and thankful to work alongside these folks that take care of our folks, that take care of our students in our schools every day. I'm happy to answer any questions.
I'll start off the questioning today. Thank you so much for this report. I'm happy to see all the efforts that human resources have put into recruiting our staff. At each, at some point in time, all of us have to touch human resources, and I'll say that question for last, but I want to know, what are your most successful initiatives in the teacher recruitment area, the retention area, and the special programs that we use to attract those quality areas? What are the individual successes that we've had, or what comes up to the top?
We are very fortunate to have student teachers that work in the, that come through the districts, teachers that are doing student practicum, but the visits and the relationships at the colleges, and being able to get the word out there to folks that are thinking about education as a career path, those have always been very successful. Additionally, word of mouth through our teachers, that know teachers that want to come into the district, that have those conversations. The events at the colleges are very successful. The Shining Stars event was very successful for us in bringing folks to Greenville County Schools to be educators. And so we continue to expand on, you know, what can we do outside of the box? How do we add, you know, things to how we are attracting folks to Greenville County Schools? So again, expanding on the certification programs and things like that, and then we share that information and put that on our social media pages, word of mouth, our Shining Stars events, our relationships with the schools, the students that come through, that build relationships and get to see what it's like to be in Greenville County. Those are very successful ways that we recruit. Retention is, you know, we recently did the UPBEAT Teacher Survey, and so we take that feedback, and our assistant superintendents, along with administration, works with the teachers to come up with a focus plan, and, you know, we take that information, thank you for that feedback, and here's what we're going to do about it. So when we talk with our educators, we ask them for solutions. How do we work through, you know, next steps? And we plan to partner with them and get that feedback on, have you seen this done somewhere else? What are your recommendations for moving it forward?
I love what you said, and I love that the fact that you started out with word of mouth. So my last question is, how do we keep our human resource people motivated? I know they're all in the audience, and so what do we do to keep that smile on their face? Because they are our first ambassadors, they have to convince people that they like working for the district. So what have we done for them to keep them motivated?
Absolutely. That is a great question. These folks and the entire human resources team, I always say that our educators and our folks in our building are there to take care of our students and community, and HR, we're the people department, and we take care of them. And so in, with this team of folks, they're all-minded that way, very much, how can I help? How can I go above and beyond? But it's very important to make sure that these folks also are very appreciated, and so talk to them about, you know, what's important to them, what's important to their folks, what type of programs and processes that we have in place, how do we make it better? Because what ultimately works better for you ends up working better for our folks and allows us to better serve the district. So we have a very open line of communication, very open feedback. These HR leaders will provide and share what they think, based on what they hear in their respective departments is going to work, and how we put that together. So I think open line of communication, making sure that these folks know that their work is very much appreciated, and I know that they let their folks know how appreciated they are. Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Dr. Stiles.
And then saying the HR team, I was just astounded by all that you've accomplished. And just looking at those numbers, it just seems humanly impossible for that small group of individuals. So I know that y'all give 100%, and I want you to know that I really do appreciate it. And the things I heard were cutting-edge best practices, and I'm certainly proud that our district and our HR department is on the cutting edge and that we could be a model across the state. One of the things that we talked about prior to implementation as a board was the PAY-ACTIVE, and that was one of those cutting-edge best practices, an opportunity for individuals who, rather than wait for several weeks to get their first paycheck, they have access to their money. I thought that was really cutting edge, and I just wanted to follow up. I mean, has that been used a lot? Just tell me, I'd just like to hear the outcome of that program, how it's worked, and has it been utilized, and are people enjoying it? I'd like to hear some feedback on that.
Yes, ma'am. We have not received any negative feedback on the program. The feedback has been positive, appreciated, that, you know, again, to your point, there's that very quick access that matters, and so the feedback has been very positive. I can provide you specific numbers of usage, if you would like that information, and the number of folks enrolled, but we have received no negative feedback thus far that has made it to human resources, unless Ms. Stack has any additional information.
Well, that's too much work, so I'm not going to answer that. I would just like to know, has it been well utilized?
To my knowledge, yes, ma'am. The program has been well-received. We have not received any negative feedback. We have not received any negative feedback in Human Resources. Just appreciation for the program.
Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am.
Mrs. Lavenus Wales.
Well, I'm just going to tell you, y'all are very impressive. When you think about processing over thirty-seven thousand applicants and hiring about almost twenty-five hundred and the list goes on. And continuing to struggle with the bus drivers and all that we're doing. And in one of the reports yesterday, I've read so many reports from the district, from Nancy, about a parent whose child isn't able to catch the bus, but that's because the bus driver left. And, and so we're looking for one. I mean, I applaud y'all. And you know what? I don't hear any negative things about HR now. And I love that. I love that because that wasn't always like that. And also, I just want to just commend all of you because the public does not realize how we go out and recruit all over the U.S. to bring people in. If I heard anything on the campaign trail, it was, you know, we need to have more diversity. We need to have more this. And I'm thinking, do you think we're not doing that already? And we're so ahead of the game and we're so advanced compared to the state. And when you think of processing over thirty-seven applications and thirty thousand of them are outside, you tell me what company does that in South Carolina? This one. And this isn't a company, this is a school district. So thank you, Dr. Royster, for hiring the right person to lead and for her to make sure she's got the right team in place. Because I always have the same, a great leader, great team, great results. Thank you.
Thank you very much, ma'am.
Ms. Goodwin-Cowall.
Thank you for this report. I had a question on the, y'all do the professional development, correct? For the, the new teacher induction and mentoring? Is it HR that does the professional development?
Yes, ma'am. And we partner with members from Ms. Cap's team on that as well. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, what kind of professional development is, is part of the induction and mentoring? Like what, what, what are y'all teaching them when they come in? It's like, I know it's on-the-job training for a lot of them that come directly from college into the teaching positions. Do you have a list of what y'all go through with teaching the new teacher induction?
Yes, ma'am. I do not have a list prepared with me today, but I'm happy to provide that to you so that you know the specifics. I think the overarching theme of that as well is a relationship with someone that has come into education. Wrapping your arms around them, making sure that you are the person that is, is kind of introducing them and making sure that you're rolling out the red carpet. Because we need educators, we need teachers, we need people to come and stay. And so I know that that is an overarching theme of bringing those folks in.
I like that you said building those relationships because that, that is the most important thing, to let them know that they are, they are needed and they are wanted. I also have a question on that employee assistance program.
Yes, ma'am.
So it said for employees and dependents?
Yes, ma'am.
So that program is offered for dependents of employees?
Yes, ma'am.
I didn't know that.
Yes, ma'am. We have, and we continue to receive positive feedback on our employee assistance program. It is a benefit that is available to our employees and their dependents twenty-four seven, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. So not only if perhaps you find yourself in a place where you have mental health concerns or you need to seek concerns about financials or whatever the case may be, you can reach out to these specialists. And our employee relations specialists do a great job at, we're the people department. And so they will receive a call from an employee maybe expressing a concern about something that they're going through. And our folks know to kind of guide them in that direction, to make sure that they have that support and they make that recommendation. Our administrators, our assistant superintendents are all wonderful about referring our folks to that program and making sure that they know that that benefit is there.
Thank you for that.
Yes, ma'am.
What is, what is Converse Art on the recruit? I mean, on the, on the hiring? You had down there, it was one for Converse Art at the bottom that you, that you. So that's an alternative program too? So, so they're not certified, but they come through that and that person got it? Okay. You gave, you gave the open jobs for the hourly work group for the beginning of the year. What is the current opening jobs? Do you have that?
I do not have that prepared with me. However, I believe it is close to, somewhat close to where those are at. We have also kind of been thinking outside the box for some of our positions. We have recruited on Indeed and done Indeed sponsored ads for those positions that has attracted and broadened our candidate pool. And so we have had some recent success in moving towards filling those positions while we do still have openings. I do not have that exact number prepared. However, I will get that information.
I believe based on the report we got earlier this week, transportation is hovering around seventy. With the ones they have in class right now, going through the process, they could get back down into the sixties when we come back from Christmas holidays, from winter break. Building services, I believe, is just below forty FTE vacancies. Is that right, girl?
Right at forty right now.
Okay. And fans, I believe, is down below twenty. Is that right, Robin? So with the exception of transportation, which is on an improving track, the other two are greatly improved from the beginning of the year. But that changes, so we get a weekly update from those different departments because that changes almost on a daily basis because of the rapidity of turnover in some of those jobs.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
That's it.
Thank you, Ms. Doolin.
Thank you. Can you talk about this student loan forgiveness option or program? And how many teachers take advantage of the student loan forgiveness? And you have to teach at a Title I school or a critical needs area?
So yes, some of that is through grants for, you know, dependent upon location, geographic location, critical needs location, where that, where that is offered. So it would be dependent upon coming into education and being willing to go to one of those locations. You know, additionally for, you know, there are additional programs that are being offered outside of just the critical needs area. We got some additional information this week of, of programs that we are going to have conversations about that could potentially create a pipeline for our hourly folks to come into education, just dependent upon their interest. And so we continue to partner wherever there is, is grants and information and funds out there for our teachers to participate, whether that's critical needs, geographical needs, or creating a pipeline of educators from, you know, folks that are in education and perhaps want to become teachers. So we make sure that any information that's out there, we're getting that information to our folks. And Ms. Bobby's team shares that with our current folks. And we will be having conversations with Ms. Morant's team to make sure that they have the information about some of the newer programs that we have recently found out about.
We can send you a list of the geographic and the subject area. It changes at least annually or perhaps more frequently. It started out, it was generally speaking Title I schools. And then the, then the economic critical needs list has grown longer and longer each year. Maybe there's like forty schools on it or something. We'll send that to you. And then the subject area list changes every year. And we really deal with kind of two subject area lists. There is one that relates to loan forgiveness and there is one that relates to retiree cap. And basically now you'd be hired back as a teacher, as a retiree, with no cap in just about every subject area we have. I'm not sure there is one that remains, that's not considered a critical need for the reemployment of retired persons. So there's kind of multiple list going there. And there's some other loan forgiveness programs that Ms. Clements referenced that we make employees aware of, think about themselves. Of course, there's one right now that's obviously a federal loan forgiveness program. It's on hold, though they are still accepting applications for it through sometime in the coming six months. And so while they'll still take applications, they've done nothing because there's a court challenge. Maybe multiple court challenges still.
But for right now, all the loan forgiveness is through state funds or state grants?
State or federal grants. All of that is all for you. We all have those alternative programs that have access to it. Our frequent candidates have to be able to, to, it's also for, which are very minimal. They can apply for loan forgiveness through state. So it doesn't come through the district. And it is available for candidates who are going to be interested in preparation programs, whether it's a legal level or through an alternative certification program. Those funds are available. So while we communicate that to our folks that we hire, we also communicate to the program.
Is there a cap on how much can be forgiven?
There's on the program, the forgiven program. Yeah, they can, after someone accepts a position within a support group, a teacher. And if there's a, it's free year that pays that their loan is forgiven in about three to five years.
No matter, like if they had a twenty thousand dollar loan versus a hundred thousand, if they worked for three years, it's just forgiven?
I would have, I get, I still have to consider twenty one, but they are very forgiving to people. Whether it's program they want to win, that's, they can have a lot of scholarships that are called. But that's individually, to the person in the university that they can, that they're personally.
Okay. Well, my last question is for you and your team. Are there things when you're recruiting that you wish you could say that Greenville offered that we don't right now?
Well, I will say this. One of the things that, that I have seen that, that really helps us is just the Greenville community name. And I'll give you an example. I was in a school on the first day of school and, you know, just participating, just, just being there. If you need anything, whatever you need, however, I can help. And there was a teacher and it was her first day. And she came here from California. Family was from California, came from California. And, you know, and speaking to her, I said, we're so happy to have you here. And tell me why South Carolina? And, you know, for her, it was, you know, we did a lot of research. We, we kept looking at lists of great places to work and to raise a family. And Greenville kept coming up on that list. So that's important for us in recruiting is, is that we have a wonderful community where people want to live and work. So that really helps us. As far as things that we don't have, our district, we have a wonderful team of recruiting professionals that go out all over the U.S. and they have conversations and they meet the most wonderful people. And it's so neat to hear their stories because our team comes back and they tell us that. And so I suppose that we could always ask for a wish list of things, but I would say that we're very well positioned. I think most importantly for us and a focus for us this year is just to continue to try to have conversations about how do we attract people to education? How do we excited our students that are graduating from Greenville County Schools to come back here and teach? Because there's so many things you can do in education. You, you can be an educator in a classroom. You, you can do so many different things. So, so that is a big focus for our team this year is to continue to, to attract those folks to education. So I don't have a wish list, ma'am, to answer your question, Ms. Bobby. Am I missing anything?
My wish, and I think one of the things to get there is to get the students to participate in college teacher preparation programs. So while we do, we think we're doing things to increase that focus. So I don't, I don't know what a hundred percent would it look like on the horizon, but we certainly will get back to the things that we might need that our success is going to be generated by. We can hire everybody who's out there. Just more good, because Clements pointing, attracting folks to Greenville, Greenville County Schools is the, the, I would say easy part, but the fun part is easy to talk. They say positive things about this district as a whole and is, and they're truthful. And I think that's a big deal. So we can hire all those folks and we can get them here. Where I would like to see our focus is I'm agreeing with more people into those teacher preparation programs. So that you're up, you're up to your target.
Thank you.
Two of the things that you've already, you all have already done. Robin, this year's teacher salary increase, the largest in twenty years, fifteen years?
It's real close to the.
The only other one that comes as close was a five percent across the board.
Correct.
Uh, five years ago.
Correct.
So you put forth the most significant teacher pay increase in the recent history of the district. So that goes directly to recruitment and retention. We're as much as seven or eight thousand dollars above neighboring districts for experienced teachers. And we're highly competitive with beginner of the year teachers. We still don't have yet from the state, the list of beginning salaries from every district in the state. There's at least one, if not two, that went, said they were going to forty-five-five. And I think at least one of the two did go to forty-five-five. Now we're at forty-five oh seventy-five or something like that. So that's certainly going to be a continued focus. Equally as meaningful, you all dramatically increased pay for our building level principals, assistant principals and district level staff to make up for a number of years where they didn't get step increases. Then probably the most significant individually to employees was we have no entry level wage less than fifteen dollars and six cents an hour.
You know, six, yes, sir.
Which is, it might not be filling jobs as rapidly as we'd like for it to, but it has slowed the loss of employees, we believe, fairly significantly. But it's making us extremely competitive in the marketplace where we're having to compete. And those are going to be things that we're going to continue to bring forward because we got to continue to stay competitive. As others move, we need to try to move, honestly, we need to try to move beyond them. Retention, I've taught with Ms. Clements already about this, as recently as this morning, about putting together a group of teachers and principals to help us with our retention efforts. I don't think it's in here. We just got the data back from Sarah. You didn't, you don't have it included in here about teacher turnover?
That information was actually very, very recently provided. I believe they finalized the report on November seventeenth, sir.
We know that our teacher turnover in, increased from last year. So is it like twelve point one percent?
Yes, sir.
All right, that's the bad news. Here's the, the good news in that number. The state's is fifteen percent.
Yes, sir.
So they're at like fourteen point nine seven and we're at twelve point one zero. So we're nearly three full points, points below the state in teacher turnover. Now, we want to go back to where we were at less than ten percent. But the market is apparently in the state of South Carolina. But the market is, apparently in the state of South Carolina, in this past year, that turnover has been right down 15%. So what can we do to better retain the teachers that we have? So you should expect for us to come forward in this budget process this year and probably likely in subsequent budget processes with items, including salary, to go towards better retaining teachers and employees. We keep good teachers, goes back to a lot of issues. It goes all the way back to the reading presentation you saw earlier this morning. If we already have them trained and they're doing a good job, we don't need to go out and look for some more. We want to keep the ones that we've got. We're also looking at discussing what might we offer as incentives to go to schools where we have the most difficulty bringing teachers in? How might that be tied to serving in that school and/or performance of the students in that school? Now, we're in the real early stages of that. Not enough to talk about it publicly, but you may hear we're talking to principals about that. We're talking to other people about that. And the idea there would be if we found some model that seemed to be workable, looking at things that may have worked in other places, probably recommend you some sort of pilot to do that here. That's just one of a number of things. Do we want to look at it providing additional pay if you have some sort of micro credentialing? Micro credentialing has become a big thing now. There are all sorts of things that we are in the early stages of exploring that obviously require a lot of internal discussion because for every idea that seems like a good idea, there's some bad part of it. Or there's some unintended consequence. Or there's, for almost everything, there's a cost. So how do you balance that out with the need for other costs? So we are, I said all of that to say we are looking at a lot of things from a preliminary standpoint that you may hear buzz about or talk about. But obviously, when we get to the point of there's something firm there, we bring that forward to the board and let you know about those things. So there's going to be a lot of work to occur, not just the rest of this year, but the rest of this year and into next year. What might we do to further attract and retain teachers, especially in the places where we're having the greatest difficulty doing so? Ms. Fitzher, how much time we have? Okay, Dr. Pressley.
Ms. Clements and staff, kudos to y'all for the aggressiveness that you're putting forth with all of these endeavors. The GATE program, wow. You blew pace out of the water. So when I pulled it up on my phone, I saw why, because of what you've been able to do with the cost incurred by the participants. That is absolutely amazing. And your diversity percentages are right on par, and you even brought them up in 2022. So whatever you're doing with GATE, that's absolutely wonderful. Have one quick question. From a certification standpoint, a pre-certification standpoint, because I heard you guys say you're looking at possibly bringing elementary into that, into that program. What would that certification look like for a GATE candidate or participant who would be working in elementary? Because it's kind of a different beast there. You got my curiosity up.
Karen, can you come, can you come to a microphone, please? I should have got Morgan.
How they'll be selected. Candace Moore is working on that process now. And, you know, they look at every single transcript. We had a similar challenge when we brought on special education certification this year. And so she studies those very deeply to determine how aligned their background is to the standard certification requirements. But she has not yet declared what elementary will look like. We are adding elementary and early childhood for next year.
Well, that's exciting. Can't wait to hear more about it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Middleton.
Thank you again for that really great presentation that was so detailed. I'm how you do it. I have two very small questions. Bus drivers are more difficult to hire now, right? What do they do when they're not driving the bus? I guess my question would be, do they have other assignments? Perhaps they could help out in the school somehow? And maybe an incentive for that would be not only pay, but maybe they could be boosted up in their retirement or something like that if they had kind of like a dual job, is what I was thinking. That was my first question.
Yes, and we do have some employees that serve in multiple roles for that very reason, because of that non-month work requirement. And I am going to ask Ms. Williams to assist in that question. Want to make sure that it is answered with every detail that you asked about.
Yes, to Ms. Clements' point, we do have our drivers and our buses are able to work in other departments. During COVID, some actually worked in the food service department to assist during midday routes if they didn't have any more. But also they help out in the summer. A lot of them have to watch the cleanup. So if they choose to, they can work throughout the summer as well as they can work in building services. So they have options.
With the shortage of drivers, they're earning considerable overtime now during the regular day. One of the challenges, obviously, and your question kind of goes to the heart of that, with hiring bus drivers is you work from 5:00 in the morning to like 8:30. Then you work again in the afternoon from like 2:00 to 5:30 or 6:00. So you have this portion in the middle of the day. It's hard to staff them into another job, but we have had some success with food service and custodial services. But quite honestly, we don't get a lot of takers from the drivers for those jobs. We have some. Then, as they indicated to you, in the summer, we hire summer help facilities, custodial grounds, that kind of thing. We'll offer them those jobs. But it is, it is and always has been a challenge that center of the day. They're also, they have an attendance and safety bonus. And if they, they show up every day and they don't have an accident, they get an amount for each one of those days. And that gets paid twice a year, which helps them at holiday, at winter break, and in the summer. And then again, they have some other employment opportunities in the summer. So we do those things to try to fill that wage gap.
Thank you. Also, I have another, oops, another question. Are you doing anything extra to get, or do you even have an issue with hiring science and math teachers?
Science and math teachers are certainly an area of focus in recruitment of teachers. Obviously, making sure that we are having conversations with those folks that have a focus that are in school, those students that are coming through, having those early conversations to recruit those individuals. And Ms. Spivey, are there any additional details as we focus on math and science teachers?
So a lot of our, so a lot of our, the alternative programs and specifically focus on the math and the science. So GATE was actually created specifically for math and science. It has expanded to include other critical needs, subject areas. And a lot of the alternative programs do that. But we also, in those partnerships that Ms. Clements mentioned earlier, we certainly have those detailed conversations with our college partners on the programs that they offer and increasing the numbers of folks in those programs. We also talk to, so in middle school, elementary certified teachers, if they are, if they have a professional certificate, we talk to the candidates about adding a middle school area specifically in math or science, typically because those are the areas of critical needs. And if they have a professional certificate, they can add that middle school area by exam. So yes, there are, just with everything else we've discussed, a lot of ways, but certainly a focus on the math and science and any other critical needs area that we need. Yes.
One last thing, and I don't even know if this would be possible, but when you go and do the science, when you go and do the job fairs and you talk to schools that are maybe in, you know, lesser areas, higher poverty index, and they come to Greenville, which now is becoming such a high area to live in, right? Greenville's becoming really expensive. Is there anything that can be done in the future to maybe either give these very new teachers some kind of stipend or a bonus or something for housing?
That kind of gets in that conversation about what we might do to recruit and retain. There is, to my knowledge, one other school district in the state that provides a housing allowance. I believe that's Beaufort County. And they only provide it to certain geographic areas in Beaufort County. The more, Beaufort County is pretty dichotomous, I think, in its wealth. Extremely wealthy areas, extremely poor areas. If you work in a school, the more socio-economically advantaged areas, they provide some sort of flat amount housing bonus or housing allowance. We have some number of deals for rent, waiving deposits, waiving utility deposits that would generally apply to any new employee. I don't remember how many they could tell you. But looking at a housing allowance, we've had like a little discussion about that. I met with a developer about two, three months ago that's developing. He wasn't necessarily looking for any financial participation from us, but he was developing some multifamily. He wanted to target it specifically to teachers. And he had structured it, structured it in a way that would be a far more competitive rent, considering it's close to downtown. But his idea was to put almost like a college-like setting, not a dorm, but, you know, now the, probably for, certainly for people that are beyond their freshman year. A lot of them get an apartment, three, four bedrooms, and they'll split the rent on it. This is more of a, you have your private space and you have a shared kind of living room type space, maybe a shared kitchen space and sort of your own private bedroom quarters or a little bigger than just a bedroom. So we've had some conversation with that person, with some others that are interested in developing housing, not just for school district employees or for teachers, but for law enforcement, fire, number of public service occupations that aren't paying the kind of wages that would allow them to live, at least not in proximity to some of our, to some of our schools or some of their places of employment as well.
Dr. Royster, if I may add to that, it's been several months ago, there was an apartment complex, to Dr. Royster's point, and contacted Human Resources, asked if she could come over and meet with us, shared information about a reduced rate for those individuals that Dr. Royster mentioned. So we take that information and we share it with our folks. Ms. Spivey's recruitment team has that information. So when we have folks that are coming to the district that are specifically asking those types of questions, we pass that forward. But we do have our community folks that will reach out and say, hey, we have this going on. It's specific to educators. Will you share it? And we're always open to that conversation.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Goodwin, call off.
He just spoke on what I was wanting to ask with providing cost for rental based on income for our Greenville County employees. Help was what my question was going to be because the housing in Greenville County is out of this world. And even though we have given, increased their income coming in, I still know a lot of educators that are still having to get second and third jobs to live in Greenville County because of the housing. And I've always said that education should be the highest paid profession in the world, but we know it's not because all of us have had teachers and we came through schools. But the housing, my thing was about with the, with providing housing at a low cost, would that help? And I think that that would, that would definitely help if we could get with the legislators, the developers, the government, whoever, in order to provide that for our people. That's all I had to say.
Any other questions? Hearing none, I'd like to ask a couple myself. Morgan, you listed on the, on the, on the, I think, slide seven, you have a list of the areas, the schools you went to to recruit. Can we get information related to that on the success rate of those, of those visits? In other words, if you've gone to 44 locations.
Yes, sir.
We're all 44, worth the investment, for lack of a better phrase.
Sure, I will, I do not have that information prepared, but we'll work with Ms. Spivey to get that information to you. Yes, sir.
Certainly, okay. And then also on slide 13, where you talk about the hourly work groups, hourly work group statistics. You referenced that, I'm taking it, these are numbers that are reflective of last school year.
For year 21, 22, yes, sir.
Yeah, and I understand that from the conversation we've had that when you look at the current openings in both building services, fans, and transportation, the numbers are currently better, but we also know that that's an up and down roller coaster. So I'd like to get the information from this as well. On the turnover percentages, these numbers versus an industry average is best we can. Plus also a trend of at least three years to show us how that, how that number is either stable or not. And that's all I need. Any other questions? Hearing none, thank you for your input and thank you for the presentation. And I'll turn it back over to Mrs. Bush.
Next item on our agenda is building and grounds. I'll turn it back over to Mrs. Middleton.
Thank you. Item 5.01 is the facilities project report for information only, Dr. Royster.
Thank you, Ms. Doolan. It is, as you indicated, for information only. Anyone has a question, we're glad to answer that question for you or get the answer for you.
I'm not seeing any questions. Okay, maybe, maybe we're good to go on that one today. Oh, what, oh, okay.
I was glad to see that the weight rooms moved up to 2023 instead of 2024.
Yes, ma'am. The information in your previous packet was not sufficient. Hopefully now it is sufficient.
Okay, thank you.
I guess it's not correct, right? It's not correct. This reflects what's actually going on.
Okay, item 5.02 is the city of Greenville Public Access Sidewalk easement at West Greenville School, Dr. Royster.
Thank you, Ms. Doolan. You have in your packet the backup information. The city is installing the sidewalk, proposes to install a sidewalk with the approval of your easement on what would be the southern side of the West Greenville School, which would be parallel to the road that runs to the southern side of the school and the employee parking area. I believe that's right, Colonel Carlin. The sidewalk does not presently exist at that location.
Okay, Ms. Bush?
Yes, I move to approve granting a public access assessment to the city of Greenville for a sidewalk project at West Greenville School.
Okay, any questions, comments? All right, hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Our next item is 5.03, so it says it's an executive session, so.
Only if you have some question or comment about the firm. What we can tell you is that facilities followed the procurement selection process. They advertise for a testing and balancing firm. That would be a firm that comes in to new construction or renovation or HVAC replacement project and performs testing and balancing at HVAC systems. The desire there, Blue Colonel. The desire there, I believe, Colonel Corlin, was to perhaps receive multiple firms to do that work. However, they received only one responsive reply, and that is recommended that you approve that, and that is Firm A, which we don't typically disclose that name until the board meeting, when it's actually approved, in, in the event there might be some challenge to it. But, because to this point, it's a contractual matter. Again, we would have desired to have multiple firms, but that was affirmed, but they were responsive to all aspects of your proposal.
They were, sir. And, and in this particular area of consulting, for whatever reason, it, it seems very difficult to find good competent or just that are out there competing, testing and balancing firms. They're, they're pretty hard to find.
And in accord with the procurement code, we would ordinarily, ordinarily, we procure contracts, you know, based on the amounts you've budgeted for those purposes. They don't rise to the level of the board, but professional services contracts do, like architectural and engineering services. This would be considered a professional service contract. They followed our protocol. They had a committee that reviewed it, right? In this case, because there was only one, but they would have ranked, ordered the proposals. And because we were seeking multiple, they would have recommended any one of those firms that met all the criteria set forward.
That's correct.
Madam Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the recommendation from the administration, which is to approve the selection of Firm A to provide testing and balancing for heating, cooling and ventilation systems for the next five years.
Is there any more discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item 5.04, mechanical and electrical commissioning firm selection. Dr. Royster?
Yes, Ms. Doolan, thank you. In similar fashion, though with a better response, this is another solicitation for multiple firms to perform as commissioning agents for heating, ventilating, air conditioning and electrical systems from design through construction and long-term operation of the buildings. Basically mechanical and electrical firms to provide services on demand for the school district. You have in front of you a recommendation from that procurement group to accept firms A, B, C, and D, all of whom met the criteria. Is there any other specific information they need to have regarding that?
No, sir. Only to, to say that this particular service assures that our systems that have been installed, our HVAC systems and our electrical systems, it's another check to make sure they're installed properly and that they are performing optimally. Because if, if you don't have that, in many cases, you can waste a lot of money in a facility over a 50-year life.
Madam Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to accept the recommendation of the administration and approve the selection of firms A, B, C, and D to provide mechanical and electrical commissioning for the next five years.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Mrs. Bush?
You, Ms. Doolan?
Yes, Ms. LaVine, it's Wales. Go ahead.
I just would like to recognize Shirley Mayer. She is Deputy Superintendent Philip Davies' administrative assistant. I'm not sure if she's leaving early because she now works for him, but after 38.5 years of service, I'm just joking, Philip, everybody would love to work for you. But I just think it's important that the board recognizes her. She has done so much in this district. If you don't know Shirley, you've missed out. I think her last day, Dr. Royster, is December 19th, or is it?
One day next week. I'm not sure it's the last day of the week, but it's one day next week.
Not ask her to come back. Shirley, find out is, are you? What'd she say?
She's taking this mic.
I, I, Shirley, I, I was just wondering, are you leaving because now you've been working under Philip Davies? Or is it just you're ready and you're ready to spend time with your family and enjoy life?
I'm going to rule that question out of order. Congratulations, and you will definitely be missed.
Well, I was going to say, no, a couple of things about that. Now, one, Shirley, you need to tell them, where did they graduate from?
I'm going to rule that question out of order too. Because we can assume, we know where they graduated.
I think you now know the answer to that. And, and you, you told them the other thing I was going to ask you about, though you didn't share with them, to whom you are becoming married, but that, that'll be up to you if you want to do that. But I do want to say on behalf of the administration, we appreciate your diligence, your dedication, your commitment. I believe this is, is 38 years for you total, some of which were at the State Department of Education. And then here in HR and budgets before coming to the Office of the Deputy Superintendent. And I know beginning with Dr. Fisher, but did it predate Dr. Fisher? Were you there with Dr. Gordon? Or, and then Randy Dozier? And, and then me, and then? But she stayed while I was in there. So what Philip did. So very much appreciate her years of dedicated service and certainly, Shirley, wish you enjoyment in, in your retirement and thank you for all that you've done. What did that mean?
Wow, Dicky!
You will be in our prayers for quite a while. We'll expect you to come back in six months and report on whether or not you've gotten Dicky straightened out.
Thank you. That's awesome.
Madam Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Severs.
Advert.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, we stand adjourned.
Don't your lunches out there?
And lunches, and lunches in the.